Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? councillor Dixon.
Chair, I advise that councillor Atwood and councillor Adams will be absent today, and I move that they be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that councillor Atwood and councillor Adams be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillor Chungwa.
I'd like to also request for a grant of absence for councillor Trina Massey.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Chungwa and seconded by councillor Johnston that councillor Massey be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
I move that councillor Collier be granted a leave of absence.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Kim that councillor Collier be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,765th meeting held on Tuesday the 27th of May 2025 be received, taken as read and confirmed.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that the minutes of the 4,765th meeting of council held on the 27th of May 2025 be received, taken as read and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I would like to call on Mr Mohammed Mustafa, who will address the chamber on the impacts of gambling in the community. You can proceed when you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Lord Mayor and councillors, and thanks for having me here. I'll see my... You know, they told me five minutes, and I was wondering, gosh, what do you actually talk about in five minutes, you know? And what makes it worse is I'm a slow-speaking African boy, so five minutes becomes even shorter. So it's a lot harder. But I thought, I've had the nice experience of meeting with members of your teams and know the roles that you guys play out in community, helping your community members. Stephen, thank you for inviting us here and telling me about addressing council today, which is great. And, you know, I know a lot of you are active, and when I sit in your offices and I see the general public come in with a lot of their concerns, you know? And there's people from every different aspect, as well as all the community work that you all do with schools and, you know, football teams and netball and kids and everything like that. And it's a great thing to see. And so what would actually happen, you know, in that time? Get people into your office, and I'm sure a lot of you more recently are hearing about things like, yes, how are we going to manage with this cost of living crisis, and how are we going to manage with housing crisis and mental health crisis and all these crises that we're facing? And then we'll get an initiative like, please be our guest and be part of our thing, help us raise some funds towards a good cause. And you've probably been involved in those door raffles at, you know, or the meat tray at a football field, and Lucky Door prize or something like that. And in those situations, if you were able to achieve a goal and raise some money for your people there, and if you only had that five minutes, and if we came up with a figure of you walking away with $7,000 that you were able to give to those people after five minutes of hard work, I'm sure you'd all be really happy. There's five minutes and earning $7,000 seems like quite a good deal to me. So at the end of today, just to let yous know, one day, just here in Brisbane, if you're not aware, you know, a lot of people are coming because they're struggling and everything, and we understand that. And a lot of people are down trying to improve their luck as such, and gambling, I'm sure you're aware, is all across our community in every aspect, in every part of it. And no country gambles like Australia. We've got the world's highest gambling per person, if you weren't aware of that. And it's really everywhere in our society and that, you know, it's in all our work functions, when Melbourne Cup Day comes along, or now State of Origin, and let's get together and do some footy tipping and everything, and we talk about it very openly and complacently. And I often say, if you were in a workspace and somebody came in and they had a few drinks and then came back to the workplace a bit intoxicated, or, you know, went out into the car park and smoked a bit and came back in, might not have a nice polite conversation. But if someone came in and said, we had a massive win in our syndicate, and, you know, everybody would be cheering them along. So to just give you an idea, just in one day on its own, just here in Brisbane region, not the other councils of Ipswich or Logan or anything like that, but just in Brisbane, at least $2 million will be pretty much lost in your guys', in your community and the people that you're working with. $2 million a day is basically what's being lost. And what could council and what could our people do with that $2 million a day? And that's the kind of figures that we're talking about. So like I said, it's approximately $7,000 every five minutes. So when I finish here, another $7,000 has been lost. And so when you're raising money and you're helping people and addressing these issues that's happening in the community, and, you know, what is gambling, and a lot of us don't know about it, but it's a very sad side of things, having worked in the, as a social worker in different sectors. We've got drugs, we've got alcohol, and we shun that often, and we talk about it with a bit more, you know? It's not looked at so favourably. But when we think of gambling, nearly everyone of us will basically know somebody in life that's impacted by gambling, and that's the reality. There's a lot of gambling going on. That $2 million figure that I told you is underrepresented as well. That's basically just what's going through, like, poker machines and stuff, not just everything else.
Sorry, Mr Mustafa, I will have to stop you there, but thank you very much. And I know that you have left some pamphlets there for the councillors to look at as well. I'd like now to call upon councillor Howard to respond. Please take a seat.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and Mr Mustafa, thank you so much for coming in and talking to us about this issue, because I think it's people like you who take the time to do that, educate us. And we know that there are many things out there that are impacting on people, cost of living wise, and to hear the statistics that you've just given us about gambling is actually quite something that we all take on board. And as you say, our, all of our officers, right, all of the councillors are often meeting with people in their office and talking to them about issues that are out in the community. So your work in the community in raising the awareness of gambling is really important and something that I know, I believe that you're associated with Relationships Australia, and I know that we have a very strong relationship with Relationships Australia, and particularly through our Homeless Connect. And I think that you were there last year, and I hope that you will be there again next month. So, because we know that that also is an opportunity for people to receive help, and we are so grateful for all of the people who participate in Homeless Connect, because we know that it is an opportunity where we bring people together, and there is that opportunity for there to be some assistance and some help. And I'd just like to reflect on the fact that I understand the Lord Mayor actually received a letter from someone who had attended Homeless Connect and had a gambling problem and now works with your organisation. And there's nothing better, I think, than someone who's experienced something like that to support others. So we really appreciate you taking the time to come in and talk to us. I know that all of my fellow councillors will look forward to taking your pamphlets and making sure that we're doing whatever we can within our community. So thank you very much for your presentation today. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Howard, and thank you, Mr Mustafa, for coming in and talking to us today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillors, we'll now move to question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, after seeing the questions on notice today, we have further proof of the laziness of the opposition when it comes to reading reports on important city issues such as the Story Bridge. For the benefit of the chamber, can you outline why this opposition is the laziest in the history of the city of Brisbane?
Thanks, councillor Toomey.
Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and thanks councillor Toomey for his ongoing interest and commitment on this topic. Now councillors, or I need draw your attention to page five of your agenda, which has a series of questions that have been put forward by the leader of the opposition, Jared Cassidy, asking questions that had he done any work at all, would be answered for him. Whenever I deal with councillor Cassidy and whenever I see many of his public statements, he's very quick to call other people lazy and incompetent. But there are few people I've ever worked with in this place lazier and more incompetent than him. And this is one of the great examples that he would like, rather than read the reports himself, he would like it served up to him, read and produced by somebody else. Well, let's take a moment to say, to consider some of these points, because I've got to say, I was perplexed by this line of questioning by councillor Cassidy. Had he done the most basic work, he would know the answers. But it doesn't really shock me. So let's take a moment to consider what is, what is in the Story Bridge restoration report published by this council. One of the questions speaks to the, has Brisbane City Council appropriately maintained the bridge? Now, I can answer that because it's in this report that we published. I'll tell you, freely available for some weeks, and I hope that councillor Cassidy has read it, considering how quick he is to criticise people for the contents of it. Now, page 27. The Brisbane City Council has been carrying out significant ongoing maintenance and repair works since taking stewardship of the bridge in 1947. See pages 14 and 15 of this report for a detailed breakdown of those activities. Now, I would table this document, Madam Chair, except I've already done it. The Lord Mayor's already done it, and it's publicly available on the internet for anyone, for all and any to read. Now, in this, page 14 speaks to the long-term commitment, paragraph six. Since 2019 alone, council has spent close to $80 million to restore the bridge and prolong its life, including stripping back the old paint, applying new protective coatings to steel and extensive concrete and steel repairs. I hear interjection. I suspect it's councillor Griffiths who's personally seen the work, who's been personally toured of the work, and has also seen the extent of, that staff members are required to go to, to keep themselves and the public safe because of the lead-based paint. Now, that, that has not been, at no point have we ever concealed that from anybody in this place, the difficulty of the work involved. And as I say, there's also imagery of some of the work here, of what was involved to keep the location safe. Question, move to page 15, a timeline of the last 30 years of work done on the Story Bridge. Now, why councillor Cassidy would need to put a series of questions on notice when this information is freely available to him in this place? It reminds me of an instance when his mentor and I suppose spirit guide, former councillor Jim Sawley, was questioned in court about his knowledge of the Kallied Power Station explosion. He said...
Point of order, Madam Chair. Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, I'm just wondering whether you can consider the comments from councillor Wines to be relevant under the standing orders to the meeting's local law?
Councillor...
Because I'm aware the question was about the bridge.
Yeah, I don't uphold your point of order. Councillor Wines is answering the question. Go ahead.
Councillor Johnston never misses an opportunity to try to make the ward more turgid and protect her Labour friends.
Councillor Wines, just answer the question.
And that's once again, and now we're calling this place...
Point of order, Madam Chair. Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, I dissent in your ruling. If you don't think that is relevant, irrelevant.
Yeah, seconded.
Yeah, thank you.
Dissent in my ruling has been moved by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Griffiths. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The noes have it. Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. As I was saying, that former Lord Mayor Sawley, when discussed about reading those reports, not only had he not read them in court, he said, I'm quoting here, he'd made a conscious decision not to read them. And you can't help but think that councillor Cassidy has taken a leaf out of that book. Now, I have produced for this chamber more than 13 reports. All of them have been tabled, all of them are available for all councillors to read. But I can't help but thinking, there's been one quote that has stuck in my mind from councillor Cassidy through his time discussing the Story Bridge. And that's when we went to the federal government and asked if they wouldn't mind being associated with us to improve this project, to which councillor Cassidy said, that smacks of a political fight that the Lord Mayor, our Lord Mayor, Shriner, wants to have with the federal government. Asking for the federal government to participate in a restoration project for a major asset smacks of a political fight. It speaks to the way that councillor Cassidy sees the world, a very strange and hyper-partisan one, and not one that deliberately delivers ongoing quality infrastructure for this city.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further questions? Councillor Griffiths.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor, who I understand is off to New York on a business junket very soon. Lord Mayor, we know about 12 million people will be worse off at the end of this month when your bus work network changes roll out. Can you tell us the number and location of bus stops that will no longer be in use after the 30th of June and table it for the chamber today?
Lord Mayor.
Well, after hearing councillor Wines and his commentary on the leader of the opposition, I think they equally will extend to councillor Griffiths, who I understand was briefed on the new bus network just recently, like all councillors were. This is a process which has been ongoing for probably, what, 18 months? Maybe longer? And, and information about this has been available for a very, very long time. But I can tell you this, because councillor Griffiths said, it's your bus network. Well, who signed off on the new bus network, councillor Murphy? It was Minister Bart Mellish and the Labour Government that signed off on it and agreed to fund 75% of the new bus network. Now, so this is a bipartisan bus network improvement that we're talking about. Well, it was until today. This is something that the Labour State Government thought was a fantastic thing, and they enthusiastically joined with us to sign the deal to go ahead with the expansion of Metro.
One moment, Lord Mayor. Point of order, councillor Griffiths.
It's really clear. I want to know the, the bus stops that are being removed or cut or closed down, and that information is tabled, which I wasn't able to get the briefing from the council officers.
Councillor Griffiths, you've asked your question, and the Lord Mayor is trying to answer it. So if you can remain quiet while he answers it. Lord Mayor.
And so councillor Griffiths was saying it was my bus network, his quote, but it's actually a joint bus network with Translink. It's a joint bus network that has bipartisan support, mostly, except for today. And it is a bus network which will deliver the biggest boost to bus services in this city in decades. It will deliver 160,000 new services a year. And unlike previous reviews, which were actually based on trying to save money, this one invests more than ever before into the network. It improves services, it adds in new services. And yes, there are changes right across the city, and that means changes to bus stops at different locations, but it's because we're improving the network, we're making sure we optimise the network to carry more people.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy. Councillor Griffiths, and it better not be the same point of order.
I have clearly asked for the bus stops that are going to be closed or cut or removed by the Lord Mayor with his changes.
Councillor Griffiths.
This affects regular people.
The Lord Mayor is answering your question. Stop interrupting and stop calling out and talking back to me. I caution you, Lord Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chairman, because of your failure to call the Lord Mayor to be relevant to the question as required under meetings local law, I move dissent in your ruling.
Nice second there.
Dissent in my ruling has been moved by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Griffiths. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The noes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good to see the Labour Defence Forces in action again. Look, this is the biggest boost to bus services we've had in decades. It means more investment in the network, it means more services more often benefiting more people. And if councillor Griffiths wants to take a negative view of this, that's his, that's his choice. But he's out of touch with his own colleagues up in George Street, in the former Labour State Government, who thought this was a great thing for Brisbane. And we're happy also to roll out the quotes from the now leader of the opposition about how great this new bus network would be and how great Brisbane Metro is as well, because those quotes are on the record, because it was a joint investment between council and the state government. Now, the new state government has continued that commitment on and is equally committed to this, but for councillor Griffiths to suggest that this is somehow a disadvantage...
Councillor Cassidy, stop calling out while the Lord Mayor is on his feet speaking. I caution you, councillor Cassidy, and we've had this discussion that all councils are to remain quiet while another councillor is on their feet speaking. Lord Mayor.
For councillor Griffiths to suggest that somehow this is a retrograde step goes against all of the evidence. There will be changes, absolutely there will be changes, because you can't improve things without changing things. And that will include changes to bus stops, it will include building many new bus stops as well, which, and that process has been underway for quite some time. And so for councillor Griffiths to think that I have right at my fingertips here, the list that he's after, I don't have that list. But the reality is, we know what he's doing here, he's trying to portray something that's very positive as something that's negative. And like I said, that's his right, but the Labour State Government in the past didn't think this was negative, they thought it was positive. And it'd be great if councillor Griffiths got on board with what is a positive change for Brisbane.
Further questions? Councillor Wolf.
Thanks very much, Madam Chair, and my question is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, the Shriner Council is keeping Brisbane moving with the biggest boost to bus services in decades. Can you please update the chamber on what changes are occurring in the inner city as part of Brisbane's new bus network?
Councillor Murphy.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you to councillor Wolf for the very timely question, because on the 30th of June, Brisbane's new bus network will commence. This means new bus routes, extended all-day services and improved frequency in our suburbs. It also means new bus stops.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, and I appreciate councillor Murphy's done this as long as I've known him, but the word route has a different meaning.
I don't uphold that point of order. Councillor Johnston, councillor Johnston, please sit down.
So why does he keep talking about the routes in the bus service? Rather than the routes in the bus service, which is a complete...
Well, Madam Chairman, we know councillor Johnston's personal preference is route, but my personal preference is route, and that's just the reality. I'm not going to stop saying it, you know? It's Pride Month, Madam Chair, I'm proud of saying route. I'm not going to stop, okay? So that's just what I like to do, and I don't know why she's so convinced that she has to change me on this. It's very weird, it's very personal, I don't understand, Madam Chair.
Point of order.
Look...
One moment, please, councillor Murphy. Point of order, councillor Strunk.
Point of order. Relevance, please.
Okay.
I didn't know this was the comedy club. Looks like it's become the comedy club.
Councillors, thank you councillor Strunk. Councillor Murphy was trying to answer a question and be relevant, but was interrupted. And he is allowed to use what term he wants. Maul, maal, mackay, mackay. Everybody has their terminology, and I will not have speakers interrupted again on such things.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Now, we will be adding new bus stops. We've already started to build new bus stops all around the city, and we will be decommissioning old stops after BNBN and Brisbane Metro Stage Three starts on the 30th of June. What we will be doing is we'll be providing 160,000 new services annually to the people of the city of Brisbane. This is going to reduce congestion on our roads, and it's going to improve service reliability, in some cases by 25%, in other cases by over 50%. We'll provide more suburban connections to key destinations while improving travel times and reducing inner-city bottlenecks, and what I've spoken about in this chamber previously, taking up to a third of the buses that are clogging CBD streets out of those CBD streets during the evening and morning peak. So what is the result? More than half of all journeys will be faster, and 85% of journeys will be faster or similar during peak periods. So this new network, Brisbane's new bus network, marks our transition to the hub-and-spoke model. That means suburban routes will feed into busway stations, which will become metro stations, where passengers will then transfer onto a CBD-bound bus service. The CBD will no longer be the hub for all services with the suburbs being the spoke. This is the ultimate vision for the busway network that the architects of the busway thought would be achieved eventually. It is being achieved by the Shriner Council, Madam Chair. BNBN gives us the opportunity as well to simplify the CBD's bus network. This new network will improve connections, service newly developed areas and create more consistent stopping patterns across all services, helping people to better navigate the CBD. This means where buses enter, travel and stop within the city will change. If you travel into the CBD, you should assume that your journey will change. Over 75% of bus journeys are changing in some way. Now, most routes that travel into the city will have new alignments or stop changes. So for example, in councillor Wolf's ward of Walter Taylor, there will be an increase in the CBD service catchment. This includes routes 425, 426, 430, 431, 435, the 443 and the 446. But bus routes and bus stops are, of course, Madam Chair, not the only changes for the CBD. As part of the new bus network, we reviewed curbside spaces throughout the CBD. And you might have already noticed signage across the city and the commencement of works. This includes many changes to on-street parking and loading zones. This includes many changes to on-street parking and loading zones, and that's very important. We've been speaking a lot about public transport users, the commuters themselves, but it's very important that drivers, motorists, delivery drivers, taxis also familiarise themselves with the changes for parking or stopping in the usual location, because what might have been a loading zone at the start of June may become a bus stop by the end of June. Council has communicated these changes to relevant stakeholders, but it's important that people are ready for the biggest change to Brisbane's bus network in over 20 years. There will be a lot of change in the CBD over the coming months. And of course, we know that we're nearing the completion of the Metro project and the Adelaide Street Tunnel, which will introduce a whole new raft of changes on the weekend as well. We're encouraging all residents to get informed about these changes that are coming, particularly as they impact the CBD streets. This change is big, but it is necessary, Madam Chair. We are shaping the city for decades to come.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired.
It's turn up and go time.
Further questions councillor Cassidy.
Thanks Chair, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, in 2019 your LNP council said the Story Bridge needed $80 million in funding. In 2022, your LNP council said the Story Bridge needed $128 million in funding. Well, that's something the councillor Wine said, so that may have just been made up at the time. In 2025 now, the situation is catastrophic. So Lord Mayor, will you answer one simple question today? Was the Story Bridge's decline all LNP incompetence? Or was it a cover-up all along? Because it's clearly one of the two.
Lord Mayor.
Well, this just goes, Madam Chair, to councillor Wine's comments earlier. No, no reading of the reports, no looking at the facts. I still believe councillor Cassidy has not read the Story Bridge Restoration Report that was released last month. It's quite clear from his commentary and his comments, which are clearly incorrect, that he hasn't read that report. That would be the starting point, and he certainly hasn't read any of the engineering reports and technical reports that have been released. And he certainly hasn't been listening to any of the things said in this chamber or the answers given. Because the reality is, he still keeps repeating the same incorrect, incorrect statements and claims about the Story Bridge. And so I'm happy to go through it all again, because councillor Cassidy is asking effectively the same issue that's been asked before multiple times and been answered multiple times before. But it's all right, I'm patient, I can do it all again. And so when I first became Lord Mayor, officers advised that the Story Bridge would require $80 million of work over the coming years, and that's exactly what I did. I budgeted the $80 million of work to be done. And as the work was done, it became increasingly clear that it was going to be more expensive and involve more detailed work than was anticipated. Why is that? It's the same situation that you would get with any restoration project on either an old building or an old asset or a house, and it's the same situation.
One moment please, Lord Mayor, just wait while councillor Cassidy and councillor Johnston are quiet. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, and it's the same situation that arose with this building that we're in right now. And in fact, we engaged the same process to deal with it that we did for this building. Now, in 2023, we celebrated 10 years since the restoration of this building, and what a wonderful thing that restoration has been. It has enlivened this place for the people, it has given it an extra lease of life, but it required a whole lot of work and a whole lot more work than was anticipated previously. And so what we did is we engaged the experts to come in and have a look at this building and what work would need to be done, and they did a detailed costing and a plan. And guess what? We engaged the same person to lead the Story Bridge Restoration Project as well. Because when it became clear that the 80 million was not going to be enough to do the job, what's the choice that you make? Do you keep signing cheques or keep signing a blank cheque? Or do you make sure that you have a process to make sure this is done appropriately and done right? And that's exactly what we have done with our expert panel. Called in the expert panel chaired by Nigel Shamia, who helped us restore City Hall, who helped restore Anzac Square, and now will help restore the Story Bridge, to make sure that this process is done right. Now, it is a fact that when you start doing work on an old asset, any kind of old asset, you find things that were not anticipated and you find that the work that's required.
Councillor Cassidy, I'm going to caution you because I've already asked for you to stop calling out while the law, and you're still doing it, just wait. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And so that project that started five years ago or more, discovered that there was more work required. But rather than signing a blank cheque.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor.
Lord Mayor is diverging from the question asked, is this an issue of incompetence? Or is this an issue of cover-up? And I assume it's cover-up, the way the Lord Mayor is carrying on.
That is not a point of order. Lord Mayor.
Well, there is an issue of incompetence and it's the Labour opposition who are absolutely incompetent. They won't even read the reports that have been provided to them, they won't even read the restoration report that's been publicly released.
Councillor Griffiths.
I would bring the Lord Mayor back to the question, it's LNP incompetence or LNP cover-up? That's the question here, not Labour.
Councillor Griffiths, we've heard your question and the Lord Mayor is answering your question. Please remain quiet while he does it. Thank you, and I'll caution you again councillor. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Look, it's clear councillor Griffiths doesn't want to be here anymore.
Point of order.
His behaviour made it clear, he doesn't want to be a councillor anymore.
One moment, Lord Mayor.
I just heard clearly councillor Murphy interject to say that I was jealous of the Lord Mayor doing a business class trip in council time to New York. You didn't pull him up, Madam Chair, I heard him here.
And I don't uphold your point of order, I did not hear that.
Hearing I worked on one side, Madam Chair.
You're claiming that, and I don't uphold your point of order. Councillor Johnston. Lord Mayor.
And so the only incompetence that we see here is the Labour opposition who refused to read any of the reports that have been tabled. Oodles of pages of information and technical reports. And, and despite the reports being tabled, and another one tabled today, they claim, they make these ridiculous claims about information not being available. I mean, it's just, it is ludicrous what we're hearing here. And despite the fact that we repeatedly said that we don't want to see a toll on the Story Bridge, they continue to say the opposite, and so look.
One moment, Lord Mayor, councillor Griffiths, such a final caution. You've asked your question, if you've got anything else to say, you can wait till general business. Lord Mayor.
And thank you, and now that we, we also see that the Labour opposition doesn't want us to ask for support from the federal government. That's the clear implication here, they objected to us asking for support from the federal government when the federal government has funded plenty of other comparable projects, including one in Tasmania on the weekend.
Your time has expired. Further questions councillor Dixon.
My question is to the Chair of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, the Shriner Council is making Brisbane's lifestyle even better by investing in our priceless natural assets. Can you please update the chamber on the latest news for one of Brisbane's biggest waterway corridors at Kedram Brook?
Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, I'd like to thank councillor Dixon for the question, because councillor Dixon knows how much loved Kedram Brook is, not only to her residents in the Hamilton Ward, but to residents right across the north side of Brisbane. Madam Chair, last year, the Lord Mayor announced a 20-year, $85 million transformation for the Kedram Brook catchment. And the great news is, the first stage of community consultation is well underway and residents are getting really excited, which is fantastic because we are really keen to hear how they use their book, how they use their brook, how they interact with the brook, what they really value about it and what their vision is for the corridor into the future. And while no two catchments are the same and therefore no two projects are the same, we can draw on our expertise and learnings from delivering for the communities around Norman Creek and Oxley Creek. Through the Norman Creek Master Plan with successful transformations at Cooperoo Creek Park and of course Hanlon Park, and now we'll be focusing on King Fisher Creek. And Oxley Creek Transformation, of course, with the fantastic World Parkland at Larapinta, the newly opened and very, very popular Archfield Wetlands District Park and the next project, the next project on OCT will see upgrades at Graceville Riverside Parklands. And now, as we move to transform the Kedram Brook corridor, we'll be looking at ways of reconnecting the brook community with their local waterway. Because the success of the projects that I have just mentioned is why we are continuing to invest in our waterways as key leisure and lifestyle destinations. For councillors who do not call north of the River Home, Kedram Brook is a significant waterway. It's 29 kilometres long and the catchment spans around 110 square kilometres. The upper catchment starts all the way up in Camp Mountain and then it runs all the way through 14 suburbs, through six council wards, where it finally flows into Moreton Bay at Nudgee Beach. And as I said, Madam Chair, the first stage of community consultation has begun and I'd really like to thank the local ward councillors for their enthusiasm for the project and for engaging their local communities to get really involved. We've held six really successful in-person kiosks in each of those wards along the corridor, as well as engagement at the recent Sustainable BNE Festival which was held in Roma Street Parklands. Stage one of the consultation has consisted not only in-person community engagement, but of course also provides opportunity for online consultation. And residents will have, still have time to provide their feedback. They can jump on to the BCC website and go to the project webpage to fill out a quick online survey. There's also opportunity for residents to provide more detailed feedback and they can also drop pins on a map of the catchment and provide even more site-specific feedback and suggestions. Madam Chair, people do love the brook. They value and treasure having the waterway on their doorstep and some of the feedback from some of the community engagement reflects the fact that the brook is that popular that people even move into the area because of the catchment. There are already very popular nodes along the waterway, which are some of the busiest in the northern suburbs, from Grinstead Park to Kalinga Park. People are cycling and scooting, they're running, they're walking their dogs. Any given morning or afternoon, it is a hive of activity along the corridor. Madam Chair, our waterways are diverse in size and in characteristics and they play a variety of roles. They provide home for plants and animals, they carry out floodwaters, they provide spaces for us to interact with nature, to cool down and offer recreational opportunities. And so this project will focus on providing opportunities for that recreation while at the same time exploring bank stabilisation and habitat planting with the aim of restoring and enhancing the ecological balance. Our creeks are very special and do deserve appreciation. Everyone, no matter where they live, is connected some way to their local waterway and their surrounding catchment. This round of online consultation doesn't close until the 29th of June. The next stage will be the preparation of the draft vision and we look forward with great anticipation of seeing what that looks like based on the community feedback. Madam Chair, ensuring everyone has the chance to continue to involve is important. Shout out to people that live along the corridor to put their views forward as we shape the future vision for the brook and to make Brisbane's lifestyle even better.
Further questions councillor Chong Wah.
Thank you Chair, my question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, you have received emails from 624 residents asking you to keep a rehabilitated Mount Cootha Quarry in public hands. We know it is 624 individual emails, as this feedback was supported by several local representatives through setting up an online avenue for residents to easily contact you. We know that those 624 residents who took the time to email you were united in asking that the rehabilitated quarry be kept as public land and as a public asset. Lord Mayor, we know hundreds of, probably thousands of residents have also used the council consultation process to provide feedback to the council on the future of this 26 hectares of public land. However, nothing about the outcome of this consultation has ever been published and no information has been made available to the public since close in May 2024.
Is there a question councillor?
I'm getting to it, in fact, all references, I need, just want to give context.
Councillors.
In fact, all references to that consultation have been mysteriously erased from the council website. Lord Mayor, my question through the chair is, why has this council administration not made public any of the feedback or even a summary of this feedback received from the many hundreds or thousands of residents on the consultation for the future of the Mount Cootha Quarry?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question councillor Chong Wah. Well, I can confirm that I'd love the Mount Cootha Quarry to remain a public asset for public benefit. And so our, I guess, thought-provoking suggestions that were put out there, we're all about making sure that what is a hole in the ground at the moment can become something special for the community. I can assure councillor Chong Wah that we're not proposing to build a casino in the quarry or anything like that. We want it to be a great asset for the public, that the public will benefit from. We had lots of great suggestions from residents, but what I can say though is that in terms of the detailed work that's been done on the quarries, we know that Mount Cootha Quarry, the rate of extraction from Mount Cootha Quarry has actually been less, much less than what is permitted and much less than what is projected. And so over the years, the projection that the quarry would be effectively fully utilised was incorrect and based on some of the great innovations that we've seen in councillor Hutton's area. I'm answering the question.
Oh, I just, I just want to make. Sorry, I just want to make sure that, that you are answering about the feedback and consultation process.
Thank you councillor.
We haven't seen any of that.
You asked a very long question and the Lord Mayor is answering it. Lord Mayor.
As I was saying, and this relates directly to the Mount Cootha Quarry, because it relates to the future of the quarry and timeframes for that. Councillor Hutton's area has been fantastic in using recycled asphalt and aggregates, which actually reduce the demand on quarry material. And so what was projected many years ago about the emptying of the quarry, because of the increased rates of recycling that we've been able to do in our road building activities in particular, mean that the quarry has more life left in it than anticipated. And so the idea that it's going to close next year or this year is not actually the case. And so.
Point of order. Point of order councillor.
Lord Mayor, through the chair, I'm asking about the feedback and the summary.
You've asked the question and it took two minutes and the Lord Mayor still has three minutes to go to answer your question. Lord Mayor.
And so it's, it's the case that the quarry has at least a decade of material left in it to remove. A decade. So the idea that next year or this year that it's been closed down to be transformed in something else is no longer the timeframe that we're working on. And so what we will be doing is making sure that there is a rehabilitation plan in place. But certainly, if you were to close down the quarry early, what you would have to do is then seek that material from other quarries. Now, council does own another quarry in a place called Brakalba, which is in the Moreton Bay council area. And it is, from memory, over 100 kilometres away in, in terms of road travel, is that right councillor Hutton? To get there by road, you're adding significant extra cartage costs. And so while that can be a source of material in the future, And so while that can be a source of material in the future, it comes at a higher cartage cost. And so using what's available in Mount Cootha is still very viable and it will potentially be very viable for at least a decade to come. And so effectively we will develop a long-term proposal for what happens to the quarry when it's no longer being used, but it's likely to be used for at least a decade. Now obviously things can change because as we've seen already, it's changed from previous projections based on increased recycling rates. And as we see more recycling occurring, it could give our quarry an even longer lifespan to operate. And so it's one of those things that will be a moving feast. But our desire is for that to be a public asset now, where it provides a public benefit for road building and materials.
Point of order.
And also a public asset in the future.
One moment Lord Mayor, point of order councillor Chong Wah.
Sorry, I'm trying to be patient but I feel like we're not answering the question. I asked, why has this council administration not made public any of the feedback or even a summary of the feedback received from the many thousands of residents?
You, you made a lot of statements that the Lord Mayor's addressed and is answering the question. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And so the feedback absolutely is being taken seriously and we will absolutely be making sure we incorporate that into the rehabilitation plan for the quarry. But as I was pointing out, it's, it's not the same urgency that was previously anticipated because there is at least a decade of life left in that quarry. And so we've got some time to make sure that the future plans for the quarry are great plans and that it's a wonderful asset for the community. And as I said, I want it to remain an asset for the community that benefits the community, that the community can use and in the future, once it's no longer required for a quarry, that it can be turned into a wonderful asset for the community to use and benefit from.
Councillor, that now ends question time. We'll now move to Establishment and Coordination Committee. Lord Mayor.
Thank you Madam Chair, I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday 26th of May 2025 be adopted.
Seconded.
Has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday 26th of May 2025 be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order, oh. I'm sorry, point of order councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much Chair, in light of the fact that it has been one year and two weeks since the motion calling on council to increase the pathways at a homelessness grant was laid on the table, I now move that that comes off the table.
Seconded.
Has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Kim that the motion from 14th of May 2024 be taken off the table. This is a procedural motion, so I now put it to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
The motion is lost.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Kim. Eyes to my right, noes to my left. Clerks, please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being five in favour and 17 against.
Motion is lost. Clerk, our councillors, please return to your seats. Lord Mayor.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Yes Madam Chairman, I'm requesting the further following information about item A and these specific issues. Contract two, the Brisbane Metro Charge Bay Availability System. What is an availability system? I'd like some sort of explanation about that $800,000. That's contract number two. Contract number four, the City Reach Boardwalk Admiralty Towers to Rehabilitation, $2.4 million. How long is the boardwalk going to be closed at this location during these works? That's contract four. Contract six, the Rocks Riverside Water Play Upgrade, $2.8 plus million. That project was not listed in the council budget approved by the Lord Mayor last year as a parks project. So when was that project decided to be undertaken by this council? And I think that's it. Sorry. Oh no, actually, I'm sorry. Just with respect to contract 15 as well. This is a contract for $14 million for tree maintenance disaster recovery services that commenced on the 8th of March and was due to conclude by the 8th of May. Can the Lord Mayor advise, or you know, somebody who knows about this, given it's the Lord Mayor's responsibility, how much tree work is still outstanding and was not covered by the $14 million allocated a few months ago?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you Madam Chair. Just as I always do, I wanted to update councillors on the lighting up of assets. Last night City Hall was lit up in green and gold to celebrate our citizenship ceremony where 575 new citizens were welcomed into the family. Meanwhile, the Story Bridge, Kangaroo Point Bridge and Victoria Bridge, as well as Radicuth Place and the Tropical Dome are lit in red, white and green in recognition of the National Day of Italy, which celebrates the 1946 referendum to become a democratic republic following the Second World War. Tonight our assets will be lit in black, yellow, green, blue and white to recognise Mabo Day in recognition of the landmark High Court decision in the Mabo case on the 2nd of June, actually the 3rd of June 1992. Tomorrow night our assets will be lit up in red to support hemochromatosis week, raising funds and awareness for early diagnosis and treatment of this inherited blood disorder. And on Friday our assets will be lit up in Maroon to celebrate Queensland Day, which is the state's 166th birthday. On Saturday the assets will be lit up in red to celebrate the 150th years of St Joseph's College Gregory Terrace. Obviously an incredible milestone for that local school. And on Sunday the assets will be lit up in teal to support International Myasthenia gravis Awareness Month, once again raising awareness for a rare autoimmune disease. Well, we've talked a bit about bridges today and there's been some interesting things happen in the last week since we last met. And because we heard the Prime Minister on radio sort of suggesting that the federal government doesn't pay for everything and it certainly doesn't pay for local roads and then referred to the Story Bridge as a local road, which is quite interesting given it's called the Bradfield Highway and it's part of the National Movement Network, which is actually listed on the Federal Department of Transport's website as part of the National Movement and Highway Network. So calling it a local road is a little bit of an interesting thing. I think that would have been fed to him by maybe some of the local labour opposition here and it was misinformation because it's certainly not a local road. But look, the Prime Minister, he was very reasonable in his comments. Obviously he hadn't been made aware of certain aspects of what's been happening with the Story Bridge but we're making sure that that's rectified. We've been dealing very closely with Minister Catherine King, who's been fantastic. And Minister King didn't call it a local road. She actually said it's the second most important bridge in Australia after the Sydney Harbour Bridge. But, but something else happened on the weekend as well and that was Minister King and the Prime Minister and the Premier of Tasmania stood together to open a new bridge down in Tasmania, which is known as the Bridgewater Bridge. Maybe you haven't heard about this, it's in Hobart. The Bridgewater Bridge. It's not a very creative name, you're right. But what is the Bridgewater Bridge? According to the project website, let me read from it directly. The crossing of the Derwent River between Bridgewater and Granton has a long history. Work to build this causeway started in 1830 and the first bridge connecting the causeway and Bridgewater opened in 1848. The existing bridge, which is the second bridge, opened in 1946. Six years after the Story Bridge. So the Story Bridge opened in 1940. And, and I'll go into quote, this is a direct quote. "It's nearly 80 years old and reaching the end of its life. It's becoming unsafe, unreliable and expensive to maintain." Right. But it then goes on to say, "The Australian government and Tasmanian governments have invested $786 million to build the new Bridgewater Bridge." Now, now apparently the federal government doesn't pay for everything but they pay for a lot of things. Now the population of Hobart is, and if you take Greater Hobart, I'm not talking about the council area, Greater Hobart has a population of 255,000 people.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
One moment Lord Mayor, point of order councillor Johnston.
Could the Lord Mayor clarify whether this bridge is part of the national highway system that the federal government is responsible for?
Councillor, that's not a point of order, I don't uphold a point of order. Lord Mayor.
The Labour Defence Force in action again. She obviously doesn't want the federal government to fund the Story Bridge. You heard it here first, councillor Johnston will fight against the federal government putting money into the Story Bridge. She wants to argue against it. So Greater Hobart, which has a population of-
Councillor Johnston, all councillors, quiet please.
Greater Hobart, which has a population of just 255,000 people, that's less than 10% of the population of Greater Brisbane. What did the federal government put in out of the 768 million? Did they pay 50/50? Maybe did they put in a third? They paid 80% of the cost. $628 million.
Councillor Johnston, do not call out. Well, one moment Lord Mayor, councillor Johnston. I've asked you not to call out and speak while the Lord Mayor is on his feet.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order councillor Cassidy.
There are about 15 other councillors shouting much louder than councillor Johnston then.
Councillor, that is not a point of order.
Councillor Allen just interjected while I was making a point of order. Councillor Davis now. Your bias is breath choking, Jim.
And that's your third caution councillor Cassidy and I warn everyone to be quiet while other councillors are speaking. Currently the Lord Mayor is trying to. Lord Mayor.
Okay, so as I was talking about, this is a, an old bridge, not even as old as the Story Bridge, that the federal government paid 80% of a new bridge to replace it. And so any suggestion that, oh, the federal government doesn't do these kind of projects, we know they do. And in fact, just a matter of days after the Prime Minister was appearing on radio here in Brisbane, he was cutting the ribbon on a new bridge that he paid 80% of. Now, the Tasmanian government paid $157 million, which was 20%, and the Australian government paid $628 million. So the 80/20 funding arrangement. Now, you might think, oh well, okay, maybe they're funding it because the Tasmanian government just can't afford to do it. Well, and there's certainly that element there. But the Tasmanian government has an annual budget of $10 billion a year compared to our $4 billion a year budget. So even though there's a smaller population in Hobart, less than 10% of the Brisbane population, the federal government saw fit to put $628 million into this aging asset that needed a replacement. Now we don't want to see the Story Bridge replaced. We want to see it restored and that's our aim here. And we know that restoring the bridge will always be more affordable than replacing the bridge. If you were to build an equivalent structure today, you're looking at $3 to $4 billion. And obviously that's not what we're suggesting. Just like with City Hall, we want to see it restored. We love the Story Bridge and we want to see it restored. We don't want to see it replaced. But it is only appropriate that we ask other levels of government to put in. So the federal government, I think the case is very clear that they do fund this kind of work. They have funded it in other places. They put billions of dollars into other projects all around the country, which they could technically argue aren't their responsibility, but they do. Now, the Kangaroo Point Bridge was not their responsibility either, but they decided to put over $60 million into it and we appreciate that. The point I'm simply making is to sort of argue that, oh, the federal government doesn't do these kind of things is just false. They do. And in fact, when the federal government collects 81 cents out of every tax dollar you pay, they have the money and other levels of government have the ability to deliver projects. And so it only follows that the people that have the money give it to the people that can actually deliver projects and that's the state governments and that's councils. And so that's simply what we're asking for in this case. And it's not an unreasonable thing to ask, given that the federal government's own transport department website has the Story Bridge listed as part of the National Highway and Movement Network. And so, once again councillor Johnston is arguing against federal funding for the Story Bridge. It's quite extraordinary because we know that she wants a toll. That's what we know. If there's no federal funding, then it follows she wants a toll instead. And so it's quite extraordinary that she would continue to interject against federal funding for what is appropriately something that should be funded with support of the federal government and the state government as well. And why the state government? The state government built the Story Bridge in the first place. And why did the state government build the Story Bridge in the first place? Because the Brisbane City Council couldn't afford to build the Story Bridge. And so it is appropriate that all three levels chip in. That's what we're proposing. It is a reasonable proposal and we'll continue to pursue that. Two, some other things, I just wanted to-
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension, Madam Chair.
Seconded. So move for an extension by the Deputy Mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
I just wanted to touch on the protest that happened at the Wickham Hotel on the weekend. Now, I don't think anyone would agree to the suggestion that it's okay to discriminate against some people but not others. We know that having equal rights in this country means that everyone should be free from discrimination. And it's quite extraordinary that there's a group in our community who thinks that it's okay to discriminate against certain groups because we don't agree with them or we don't like what they stand for. And that's exactly what's happening here. A group booked a private party in a pub to celebrate a Jewish religious and cultural holiday and they were picketed and from all the reports that we've seen, they were abused, they were screamed at. There were vile things that were said to them. And so we can't allow ourselves to live in a city and a community where people are dehumanised in this way because they might have views that are different to ours or they might believe something that we don't believe. Because equal rights either applies to everyone, freedom of discrimination applies to everyone, freedom from discrimination applies to everyone, or it applies to no one. And so we just need to say no to this kind of response. You know, labelling people and then dehumanising them and then saying, well, they shouldn't be free from discrimination because I disagree with them, that's not okay. So we must, as a city and as a community, push back against that. Now, it's okay for people to protest regarding what's happening in the Middle East, there is nothing wrong with that, but to target a group of people here, that's a different thing altogether. We hear all the time protesters in King George Square protesting in support of Gaza and the Palestinian people, and we don't have a problem with that, provided they're not targeting a group locally and causing division. It's okay to be absolutely passionate about what you believe, it's okay to object to war and death and destruction, that's okay, but to target a group of people here, that's a different thing. And so, there's always going to be people in our society whose views are very different to our own, that's a normal part of living in a free and democratic society. But that doesn't mean that they can be dehumanised and targeted and discriminated against and that a private party can be ambushed like that. And so, we've got to say no to that, we've got to say, not here, we don't allow that, we don't tolerate that. And you can believe what you want to believe, you can protest against war, you can call for ceasefires, you can do all those things in a free and democratic society and that is your right, but it's different when you're actually discriminating against a group of people here. In terms of the items in front of us, oh, sorry, one thing on a different note, Holly the Rat Dog is turning ten, so it's Holly's birthday. I'll tell you what, for a ten-year-old, yeah, amazing, absolutely amazing, does great work for the city of Brisbane, and Holly's part of a 100-year legacy of rat dogs, sniffing out the rats of Brisbane and on the clock all the time. And if you've ever met Holly, and I know some of you have, what a beautiful soul Holly is and does great work for the city of Brisbane. Last Friday, council was once again recognised as a gold-tier employer in the Australian LGBTQ+ Inclusion Awards. Council has been long recognised as a top-ranking participating public sector employer in Australia, and the LGBTQ+ Inclusion Awards celebrates the results of the Australian Workplace Equality Index, which sets the national benchmark for workplace inclusion. So I'm extremely proud of council's acknowledgement and participation in that programme and recognised as a gold-tier employer in that. And thank you to our River City Pride team within council and our HR team who are absolutely committed to this, and they've delivered an organisation that we can all be proud of, where everyone feels included. There's always more to be done and that work continues, but this is an acknowledgement of the fact that Brisbane is an inclusive employer, and that's something we should absolutely be proud of and celebrate. To item A, the Contracts and Tendering Report for April 2025. Seventy-two out of seventy-three contracts, being 98%, were awarded to local suppliers. So far this financial year, 174 contracts have been awarded to local suppliers, being 96% of all contracts, and a total spend of over $1 billion with local suppliers. The contracts include the Moreton Island Waste Collection Services. Obviously, there's a unique situation on Moreton Island, and this contract ensures that waste and recyclables are collected and transported back to the mainland for the 302 ratable properties on Moreton Island. Once back on the mainland, they're processed properly in accordance with council's policies, and that means that the recycling gets recycled and, as you would expect, to occur. It's vital for this contract to continue, given there are significant logistical challenges with servicing Moreton Island, and with no formed road network and limited access to the mainland, it's essential that we continue to provide this service. It's also Beams Road Stage 1B, and this is very exciting, because I was out there with councillor Landers, yourself, Madam Chair, last week, watching the work progressing along that corridor. Obviously, the first stage of our upgrade was completed, the overpass, the rail overpass is well under construction, and now the next section beyond the rail overpass is getting done as well. And so this contract was awarded in this batch, and I'm looking forward to that work happening because it's all part of keeping Brisbane moving. The City Reach Boardwalk Rehabilitation is part of it as well, and that is a contract for the rehabilitation of works to be undertaken near Admiralty Towers and Howard Smith Wharves. Obviously, it's a key part of the boardwalk. This boardwalk was transferred from the state of Queensland to the council in 2010, and following this transfer, we identified a programme of ongoing maintenance and rehab works that were required, and that's been running continuously since 2014. For those of you who use that section, you will notice that there's been various sections that we've already performed works and maintenance on and improvement works, and that work continues with this particular contract. One of the things that we're mindful of is how this contract interacts with the Story Bridge footpaths, which obviously we're keen to repair, and that work has commenced already. In fact, the workers are on-site for the first stage of that repair work. And so, as part of this, we're taking into account how this closure or this work might impact on the Story Bridge closures, and so we're working hard to make sure that the impact is minimised. And so I know the Chair will speak further on that particular matter, but it's something we're very mindful of. The work has to be done nonetheless, and it's just about making sure we optimise the timing to minimise disruption and impacts. Rocks Riverside Park, this is something that councillor Johnston seems to be very interested in and excited about. This is the water play feature, which was one of our commitments in the last budget. The water play has served the community well for the past 22 years, but it's well beyond the typical lifespan of 10 to 15 years, so obviously due for an upgrade and replacement. And I know councillor Hutton has advocated very strongly for this and is very excited to see this happening. Environmental Information System, this is a new arrangement with the existing provider of council's award-winning floodwise information system. We've always prided ourselves in providing the best available flood information to residents and businesses, whether it's helping them improve the resilience of their properties or to be prepared during a severe weather event, this information system helps. The new contract with our existing provider will deliver a 31% discount on the existing licence fee, which is a good outcome for ratepayers. There's also structural repairs to the Mitchellton Youth Club included in this, so that it remains safe and available for the benefit of all 850 users, 60% of whom are women and girls. This project is jointly funded by council and the Queensland Government's community and...
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move for an extension, Madam Chair.
Seconded.
Has been moved for an extension by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it, Lord Mayor.
So it's jointly funded by council and the Queensland Government, as I was saying, to improve the resilience and amenity of this facility. There's also aquatic weed management work and a contract for this, which delivers management of the 42 lakes and waterways across Brisbane that we're actively managing. The preferred method of weed management is our award-winning biological control approach, which, what does that mean? It is biological, so we use insects and weevils bred at our facility in Zilmia to clear waterways with minimal environmental impacts. This is a good news story, because there's various ways you can get rid of weeds in creeks. Number one, you could go and spray them, which would then kill lots of insects and other things. And number two, you could mechanically remove them, which causes erosion and impacts along the waterway. Or number three, you could use biological control techniques like this, which effectively using natural means to reduce weed infestations, and it's had some great success. I've seen the weevils being bred, and this is something that we should be proud of because it shows the commitment to not only managing weeds around the city but also doing it in an environmentally sensitive way, and a way that doesn't harm our environment but improves our environment. And so, that's, like I said, a great news story. Also, I just wanted to mention that there's a new provider for the Lord Mayor's Christmas Carols. The contract will deliver the event production and management for the carols over the next three years. I particularly wanted to thank the previous provider, Little Red Company, and Naomi and her team, who did an amazing job. They didn't retender, or they didn't put in a bid again this year, but I'm sure they all agree they did a fantastic job with the Lord Mayor's Christmas Carols in recent years. Following the open market competitive process, council has selected a new supplier. Riser has delivered large-scale creative public programming events and broadcast projects over the last 20 years, including many events here in Brisbane. In 2025, the Riser production of carols will feature local talent, team members, collaborators and suppliers from Brisbane and surrounding areas, and more than 80% of the art workers engaged will be based here locally. We want to thank our previous supplier and thank them for their efforts in making sure that each year the Christmas carols got better and better, and they've certainly proven their amazing abilities and creativity. So thank you to Little Red and also congratulations to Riser for this new contract.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks, Chair. Rise to speak on all the items today here.
How many?
Just the one, just the one.
Yeah, that's right, yeah, that's right. Maybe Lord Mayor's packing for his overseas trips, of course, yeah. But, you know, Brisbane at the moment is facing multiple crises. We have a housing and homelessness crisis, we have a congestion crisis engulfing every suburb in Brisbane, there's a Story Bridge crisis unfolding as we speak, and we have over here the LNP Coalition of Chaos overseeing it all. And the fact is that this LNP Coalition of Chaos brings now nothing to the chamber for debate, and it seems nothing to civic cabinet meetings for debate. When you look at the report that's before us today, there's no commitment and dedication to finding solutions to these wicked challenges that Brisbane's facing. All we have before us today, the entire Civic Cabinet Report, E&amp;C Report, is a Contracts and Tendering document, which is a procedural item for E&amp;C to note and then bring to council for noting, because these decisions were made months ago by delegates of council. That, you know, fair enough, they're carrying out the will of the regime and the decisions that the Lord Mayor is making, but they are, this document is just something that does get noted when it comes to us here. This isn't a decision that we're being required to make today as a council collectively. So we can only assume then nothing went on in the civic cabinet meeting last week, so no decisions were made, no discussions were had about solving those challenges that Brisbane faces at the moment. So after 21 years, the regime really have given up on delivering for Brisbane, if they were ever committed in the first place, of course. We saw last week such little amounts of infrastructure being built in the suburbs where existing capital projects were being written off and being delayed, so it looked like an expense, projects being delayed or cut entirely. We see the LNP regime here with a go-slow approach to so many of those problems, particularly in addressing the housing crisis and in planning changes, they're not prioritising at a high level things, they're not prioritising the bread and butter of council either. So it couldn't be more clear that the LNP are just sitting on their hands. And we know Brisbane needs a lot of action and deserves a council that wants to do it, there's plenty of work to be done, whether you're driving on roads with immense congestion, the worst this city has ever seen. I want to take somebody this morning, 25 minutes to make it from the tunnel on the ICB under the RNA showgrounds to the Norman B, 25 minutes to get on that council road, Lord Mayor through you, Chair. Drainage that's ageing in the suburbs of Brisbane, not up to the standards we need for a modern city. Playgrounds that need to be repaired, grass that needs to be cut in parks and roadsides all around Brisbane, community groups crying out to be heard, Chair, but this LNP council is not listening. Council's role, we could be discussing council's role in helping deliver the $10 billion package for housing under Labor's national housing policies. We could be discussing ways to get this LNP regime out of the way of delivering community batteries in Brisbane. Federal government has funding approved for them, they're waiting to go into the community to provide cheaper energy to people, and this LNP regime is standing in the way of providing energy bill relief for ordinary people. So again, you think just after 21 years in power, they might have maybe an idea or two left in them, but it doesn't seem to be. The Lord Mayor spent the longest amount of time, he spent talking about any of these contracts before us today, was saying that he saw how weevils were bred. He was very interested in the breeding of weevils, that's the sort of level of debate that we've got to here in this council meeting. And some of the contracts before us are important, I guess, and are interesting to talk about, so I'll touch on some of them, Chair, because it's the only thing we've got today to discuss when it comes to the agenda of the LNP in here. There's additional costs, as we see, for the already blown-out and delayed metro project, so something's gone wrong there, obviously, in the planning for that project, which of course, we remember, started as a $944 million tram project, an underground subway system, which is now a $1.55 billion bus. But we'd need apparently some additional systems being purchased to iron out all those teething issues that we've been hearing about, a really bumpy start for the metro. They're seeking proposals for an optional enhanced solution that will integrate with external systems and send a receive selectable data. Now, you think this is, this is, this is, sounds pretty critical to the operation of the metro buses, you think, and this comes after the LNP claimed the metro was launched in October last year. Who remember that, Van Vee? It was launched and then not launched, there was all those crazy reasons that apparently it was never launched, it was never a bus, and then there was, and then they blamed Translink, and then they blamed the teething issues, and then said it was everybody else was so stupid, they didn't know what LNP councillors were thinking in their heads, that it was only ever going to be a short trial. So really, clearly, they never had a plan on the rollout of the metro bus after the wheels, or the tracks, I guess, fell off way back when. On the Beams Road contract, an interesting one here.
Yes.
So this is one of the many projects that's been delayed, of course, Chair, you'll know about this. One of the many delayed projects from previous budgets, but particularly this year's budget, the current budget we are in now, has been pushed into next financial year. This project's meant to be a much longer section of road, and it's supposed to be much further along in its construction than it is today, and it's something that continues to frustrate motorists and commuters in the community because of those delays, Chair. The contract price, it says here, was normalised to include delay costs, variation margins and day rate schedules, another way, a technical way of saying the LNP can't manage road projects, because every single one that they have attempted over the last decade or longer has been an absolute debacle. Now, this is called 1B, it was all supposed to be 1 project, then we got 1A and 1B, and then they carved off another section called 1C, which is further delayed. This section's Castle Grove Avenue to Hanford Road intersection in Tagham. Take note, councillor Wines through you, Chair, Hanford Road. Last week councillor Wines thought it was Hanford Street, which surprises me, given how often he goes out there and looks at this project, doesn't actually really know where it is occurring. This project will stop short of completion, essentially. These works will be leading to an intersection that is already below standard and will now be completely choked with traffic, meaning most of the gains from the project itself in your ward, Chair, won't be realised until the Beams and Hanford Road intersection is finished. So all of that traffic that'll be travelling still at very slow speeds on that brand-new road are going to be held up at an intersection because the LNP cut funding for the completion of that project. They call that Stage 1C, and that's now in the never, never, of course, something that the project team told me, and I presume you as well, Chair, that funding is not of our... is not available to finish this project. This contract before us today... Yeah, well, I don't know, maybe, yeah, the Chair could come down and make a contribution on this. Of course, I'll take that interjection from councillor Griffiths. Now, I note the tender for this project is Giorgio Group, and that was an interesting one, interesting last week, where councillor Wines talked about this and talked about Giorgio as a contractor. And I wondered why councillor Wines was very animated about Giorgio and gave him extra special praise. And the Lord Mayor was very animated, he doesn't often get, give animated interjections, but he did when Giorgio was mentioned, and it was the most animated I've seen him in a very long time, Chair. So, we went and checked if there was something special about Giorgio, of course, as a contractor. And it is really interesting how the LNP love to praise donors. Giorgio was a donor to the LNP, they donated to the LNP in November last year, November last year, Giorgio donated to the LNP. So, we see this pattern with the LNP, of course. So, special, special praise and promotion of donors through, through talking about contracts. The Lord Mayor got very animated about that. Not too dissimilar from the Lord Mayor's promotion of other donors. This one here is, of course, that firm, that former NDIS firm that the Lord Mayor's holding, the special brochure, they're advertising them, Kakuna, I think it is, that was the 30 grand lunch. I table that photo for all councillors to see.
Madam Chair, to relevance, councillor Cassidy's straight from the report.
I don't uphold that point of order. Councillor Cassidy.
Thank, thank you, Chair. And another donor, of course, that the Lord Mayor gives special praise to, Drake Trailers, he promotes them as well. So, it seems if you give, if you are table that photo as well, if you, a Drake cap worn in that...
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired.
I move for an extension.
Seconded.
It's been moved for an extension by councillor Kim and seconded by councillor Griffiths. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. So, if you're, if you're a donor to the LNP, it seems the Lord Mayor has a system of special promotion and praise for your products on his official social media channels, and it's now extended, it's now extended into here, into the chamber. Because I've never seen a display quite like that last week when councillor Wines and the Lord Mayor were talking about this LNP donor being awarded a $17 million contract for works on Beams Road. So, an interesting sorry saga there for poor old Beams Road and northside residents living in Castledine and Aspli and beyond trying to traverse that east-west route, Chair, from your ward into mine and backwards and forwards there. It's just a shame that they're going to miss out because of the political decisions of this LNP regime. Talking about City Reach boardwalk at Admiralty Towers rehabilitation, this, this is, this is a clanger, this is bad, the timing's really bad. And, and we know this could have been avoided because when the reconstruction of this boardwalk section began, it doesn't appear that the council, well, if you just looked on the surface anyway, didn't appear that council had the foresight that the Story Bridge footpath would close at the time, the way it was all lined up. But even though now we have found out since this City Reach boardwalk works occurred, that in fact the LNP did know that the footpaths needed to be closed. In fact, they knew they needed to be replaced as far back as 2020, but they certainly knew that they needed to be closed ahead of this work starting. So, now we see further frustration for pedestrians and cyclists who can't access the Story Bridge because the detour that is recommended to them by councillors is even worse now than expected. So, the official detour directs people to use the Kangaroo Point Bridge, but if they can't get there via, to the city via the City Reach boardwalk, from the Kangaroo Point side, if you cross the Green Bridge to get to the valley, you now have to walk or ride on busy city streets up and, or traverse stairs as well, through a convoluted, less accessible paths, because before us and the project, the contract before us, which is related to the project, says there'll be closures as well of the City Reach boardwalk. So, how long will that go on? The Lord Mayor didn't seem to know. Hopefully, we'll get some information today about that. But the, the footpaths on the Story Bridge are now closed indefinitely, and there's an ongoing project on the crumbling, the, the footpaths on the Story Bridge are literally crumbling as we speak. They're sending people to go and walk underneath them. I'm not sure if those nets are up there yet. And then when they get to the City Reach boardwalk, they might be turned around, might be turned around and told to go back up and walk down, not Queen Street, probably Anne Street or Adelaide Street or something like that, go up, you know, like this is, this is, this is an Olympic city, apparently. This is just incredible, absolutely incredible. The Lord Mayor, well, he doesn't care about it, clearly, because he didn't talk about it. Maybe, he will claim he doesn't know about it, he will claim he's never read the contract or he never read the, the report into this, I'm sure. But this is, this is shocking for people trying to get around the city. Another bad, bad outcome of his management of the Story Bridge. Talking about some of the other contracts that are before us today, the $180 million, that's the total contract, obviously, there's other contractors are getting other amounts throughout the, the period on traffic control, and specifically for disaster, emergency, emergency road closures and emergency traffic management. And so, these contracts, I think, was actually back in, that contract was back in March, which accounted for some of the work that was required, the additional work required during Tropical Cyclone Alfred. Again, the same problems we faced then in March, early March this year for Tropical Cyclone Alfred, were the exact same problems we faced in the 2022 floods. People had the exact same experience. They would try to go and get sandbags, and they would drive up to Zilme Road in my instance, in my ward, and then sit there for four hours, because for the first two days, there was no traffic control. And we have council officers trying to cobble that together, who are also trying to manage the distribution of sandbags. And you would think lessons were learnt. And, and this is a continuing theme, Chair, about all those recommendations and supposed learnings from 2022, including recommendations in the 2022 flood review that were supposedly met, and they were ticked off, and the Lord Mayor said they were all done. And yet, people had the same experience, the same bad experience in 2025, and they found nothing had improved. And so, this is sort of, this is an item that was scrambling to find a solution to a problem that should have been solved three years ago with proper planning. But again, because it's a sort of bread and butter issue of council, the LNP have no real interest in it whatsoever, to the point where Zilme Road was closed permanently for four days during that event. And we now find out that sandbags will no longer be available to people all the time, and they will be managed and only available when certain disasters are declared at certain points, which is just going to add to mass confusion as well. So, nothing was learnt and nothing was improved between 2022 and 2025. And again, the $14 million tree maintenance services for disaster recovery approved 8th of March, so obviously, there is funding available to pick up those trees. Whether it was enough or not, I think, you know, we're led to believe the LNP didn't have $2 million to clean up parks, and yet there was a $14 million tree services contract awarded in March. Parks, there's still a mess in parks incredibly today. I think this is now like week 12 or something like that, 11 or 12 after the cyclone. I went to a Sorry Day event at Kalinga Park on the Kedron Brook, and that place is a mess. The park there had tree branches down everywhere, right at the sorry site, where the ceremony was being held, our view was piles and piles of branches and leaves and long grass with tape all around them, that, that this LNP administration was squeezing funding for and wouldn't go and even do a special clean-up for an incredibly significant day at an important park, at Kalinga Park. And I was just sitting there thinking, this is crazy. How can, how can we be in, you know, the city that apparently the Lord Mayor says is all about delivering in the suburbs, and he claims that there's 80% of the so-called $4 billion is being spent there? Well, not at, not at Kalinga Park. Last week it wasn't. That place still looks like a mess after the cyclone. So, I don't know whether councillor Davis has been there, Chair, as part of the consultation around the Kedron Brook, if that was one of the sites, maybe not. But I certainly think they need to get down there. I think they certainly need to get down there and have a look on the ground at some of these issues that we're, our communities are still facing 12 weeks on. And just finally, the, the Moreton Island rubbish contract, which is in my ward, an important one. I've seen the work that those contractors do over there on visits that I've taken, including the work that council officers do, working with contractors, in maintaining a network of roads and a drainage system that is entirely made of moving sand is quite challenging, and having a rubbish truck essentially operating on that island is, is no mean feat. So, it's important certainly to support that contract so people get the services that they need, whether they live there permanently or, or, or visit the island. And the management of that island is evolving now, as it is a part of the native title claim that was approved with the Kandamooka people, known now as Mulgumpen, and North Stradie as Minjerabah, joint control over there with First Nations Rangers and operating the camping areas. So, there's a big interaction between that management, which is new and great for the community, and the services that council provide, because campers and others use the waste transfer stations as well, visiting the island. So, very important project, and that is certainly something I support.
Further speakers. Councillor Murphy.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, rise to speak on item A of the E and C report. So, included in the contracts and tendering report is contract number CW15063 for the Brisbane Metro charge bay availability system. Now, we had a question from councillor Johnson before around what a charge bay availability system is, and I, I will explain that, Madam Chair. So, introducing a charge bay availability system is something that council's been considering for several years now. And since the successful 169 trial and introduction of the M2 service, the benefit to introducing a charge bay availability system has become more evident. We've got four fast charging locations for the Brisbane Metro project across our network, across line M1 and M2. They're located at UQ Lakes, at Countess Street, Ernie's Roundabout, and the Roche Dale Depot. This is where fast charging occurs in just six minutes, and this is what allows us to provide those high-frequency services 24 hours a day with very little downtime. By introducing a charge bay availability system, we're able to improve the efficiency of operations at these charging locations. So, this system allows the drivers to see which bays are available for use before they arrive at the location, so to plan their manoeuvre into the appropriate bay. It also prevents drivers from entering bays that are already occupied. Is that, yeah, is that how you say manoeuvre, councillor Wines? How do you say it? I'll take the interjection from councillor Wines, I've got to really watch my pronunciation of all words. I notice that I'm the only one that constantly gets raised with, evidently every other councillor in the chamber is, is, is speaking the King's English. So, so, Madam Chair, this, as I said, resolves the time constraints or the driver manoeuvring that must occur in the event that a bay is unavailable or not available, as it would be councillor Wines. Of our fast charging locations, Countess Street and UQ Lakes were deemed the most beneficial for the introduction of a charge bay availability system. This is because Ernie's Roundabout and the Metro Depot have much better visibility for the drivers as to which bay is available. However, we will consider introducing this new system at other locations, should they be considered necessary in the future. With the introduction of the M1 just weeks away, introducing this system will improve the availability of bays and in, in time for the launch of that service. This contract has been awarded to Outcome Proprietary Limited, and I look forward to the implementation of this hardware-software solution. And speaking of outcomes, Madam Chair, we heard from councillor Cassidy about what he thinks the outcome of the Metro project has been, and we heard a number of retellings of the budget of this project over time, how the budget has changed. It's gone from, you know, 1.54 billion to 900 million to 1.24 billion to now 1.54 billion. The reality is, when I look at the change and the flux in that budget, Madam Chair, I see continuous improvement. I see continuous improvement on this project in attempting to deliver a fantastic public transport outcome for the residents of the city of Brisbane. I see constant evolution in the technology solutions that we are applying to the problems of moving millions of people around this large and geographically diverse city. And I see an approach from the offices, which is to say we are always getting better. And it's for this reason that we are still the only major public transport project that's attracted committed federal government support because of the very high benefit cost ratio that Brisbane Metro attracted back when we made a submission to Infrastructure Australia. So, now councillor Cassidy says that we blame others. That's absolutely not the case. We know the project has changed. Where it has changed, it has changed for the better, and that is the reason why we are seeing so many people flock towards Brisbane Metro, the reason why we are seeing patronage going through the roof with first the 169 and now the M2 service, and why in just under a month's time, we're going to see even more winning, Madam Chair.
Further speakers. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on item A, the only item in the council chamber today. And I too also note that instead of running the city, the Lord Mayor will be off on another junket, probably, I think, his third or fourth over the last year or so, in just a few weeks. It's time to New York, how delightful for him. Meanwhile, the Story Bridge crumbles, the storm clean-up from the cyclone hasn't happened, and so on. So, anyway, these contracts before us today, I note that there's only been one question answered of the questions that I've asked. So, I'll just run through the issues of concern that I've noted in this lackluster effort by the LNP, which is to bring in an item for noting. So, I thank councillor Murphy for explaining to us how the LNP's bus route, which it is a bus route, is going to impact on residents. And no, he didn't do that. He came in and said, well, these are all going to be helping bus drivers find the right bay to pass their bus in, because, I don't know, maybe they can't see them when they rock up, or whatever it might be. But I just thought, well, how does that contrast with what resident information you can get, given that bus drivers can get information about where to go and put their bus for charging? What information can residents get about where to go to get on a bus? And my office has had some interesting looks at Journey Planner over the last couple of days, including the fact that there is not a single downloadable timetable for the new buses available for residents in Brisbane. So, if you're elderly, if you're elderly and you rely on a paper timetable, they're not being printed at all. This LNP administration, including councillor Murphy, just ticked off on no more printed timetables, but they didn't actually fight for having downloadable timetables when they announced their new bus service starting from yesterday. Not only that, some of the new bus services don't actually have timetable information available on Journey Planner either. So, I'm delighted that councillor Murphy's bus route that he's so proud of talking about is now going to mean the bus drivers will know where to park their buses, but the people who need to get on the buses won't know where to or when to go and hop on the actual bus services that they're running. So, that's a quality outcome. I am still waiting for the City Reach boardwalk answer, and I would have thought councillor Murphy could answer that, given the significance of this walkway. But yes, I think the closure here needs some public timeframe around it. The LNP needs to be accountable for how long, an alternate access point to that part of the city, which is already limited because of their stuff up on the Story Bridge footpaths. So, this is another way in which residents will not be able to get around the city because this LNP administration's incompetent management of our city's assets. So, I'm really interested in how long the City Reach boardwalk near Admiralty Towers 2 will be shut, and that was a question that I expect to be answered today. If not by councillor Murphy, who sat down by councillor Wines. It's really interesting, isn't it, that in the budget report last year, the budget book last year, that the Lord Mayor removed pretty much all the figures for funding for projects, but in the schedule of works, there is a list... but in the schedule of works, there is a list of all the projects that are to be delivered that didn't include any funding figures this year, but certainly the Rocks Riverside project was not listed in that budget book at all, it's not mentioned. So it's really interesting to know that the giant slush fund considered the Brisbane City Council budget is being applied preferentially to LNP projects, that's great to see, with no accountability or transparency for the rest of our community. I also would just like to spend a moment or two speaking about, I did notice the extensive traffic control, but we'll go on to the tree maintenance services for disaster recovery in the one minute less I've got left. So two, three months ago, the LNP allocated $14 million for tree works after the flood. Now, that is at odds with every single thing that the LNP have said, including councillor Cunningham. So does she not know what is happening with the council budget? Now, I haven't had an answer to this, but I do expect one, because there are trees down still all over my ward and all over the city, we are not alone here. How much more money is needed to finish cleaning up the tree debris from Cyclone Alfred? Because clearly this didn't cover it.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers, councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to contribute to the debate before us today and to make some comments generally about the contracts and tendering process. But before we move into it, I just wanted to respond to one of the comments made earlier by councillor Johnston about her concerns about the council no longer be printing timetables for people. I encourage her and all councillors to print them using your extensive printing machines that all of you have in your offices. Now, I appreciate that councillor-
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
Point of order.
Claim to misrepresentation.
I note your claim.
I appreciate that-
Councillors, can you be quiet while councillor Wines is on speaker?
Councillor Johnston has been a member of my committee for some time and has indicated some difficulty managing the IT services to access the meeting and things, and that may extend to being able to use the printer in our office, but I'm sure that some of her team will be able to do that for her at the appropriate time. Now, I would also like to speak to some of the items within the report, those of course being firstly, the Beams Road Stage 1B, and I have to respond to some of the ludicrous statements made by councillor Cassidy. I have to go back to start again and remind all councillors that when we put the project, the Beams Road project, to tender, we had one tenderer. In the name of probity and fairness, we broke it into smaller pieces so not only first-tier but second and third-tier firms could bid to get a better and more competitive price, and that's what happened. And so we broke it into manageable pieces in the name of protecting the city's and the ratepayers' financial interest. And that has resulted in what I think has been a pretty great outcome. One of them has been Beams Road 1A, which, now I think councillor Cassidy was attempting to be clever when he said I didn't go there often, but you and I councillor Landis have been there separately on three occasions to inspect a whole range of things on the site, and it's a wonderful opportunity to see that 1B, the eastern portion, proceeds. Now, one of the Labor councillors, I think, said to councillor Cassidy that, suggested somehow we were grubby, but the only thing that was really grubby was the assertion by councillor Cassidy that Georgios didn't deserve this, or that their work with us on Mogal Road in particular, which, quite frankly, they've been great partners to work with in the delivery of what's been a highly contentious site for underground services and for a whole range of issues, in particular the weather. So those two things alone put a lot of pressure on that project, and Georgios worked with us to deliver that, and they have worked well as a partner, not a rival, for that project, and I am confident they will be able to deliver, Georgio will be able to deliver the Beams Road Stage 1B as well. Now again, I have to say this because councillor Cassidy chooses to ignore me many, many times. The Hanford Road proportion of the project will occur in sequence, will occur in sequence, and a sequence we announced some time ago. And the decision that he has made to ignore me, again, what was the language he used? Smacks of a partisan political agenda by him, that he would choose to confect outrage, to create a scenario where we're not doing something when we've clearly stated that things will be done in sequence. That smacks of wanting a political fight. Now, the framing of the work on Beams Road, I wholly reject. I have seen the work done in your area, I've seen in particular upgrades to Dorville, I've seen the upgrades to the active transport way in particular, it is much, much better. Now, also recalling that there was, before the work, typically 11, there was 11 accidents in the period leading up to the work, the bulk of which were bumper-to-bumper, which were nosetail. That has not happened since we've done this work because we've been able to create a more efficient road network. So the idea that somehow these works have not materially improved that community are wrong, I reject them, and I'm confident your residents reject them, and I am pretty confident that the residents of Deegan Ward think that any such proposal, any such idea of that is also equally ludicrous. I also want to make some comments regarding the City Reach Boardwalk, which is also part of this report, an intended package which was released to obtain marine infrastructure contractor from council's panel of suppliers, because marine work from a barge is a specialist skill that we have to contract in. As part of this program, it is part of a five-stage program-
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Councillor Johnston, your point of misrepresentation.
Yes, Madam Chairman. My point in speaking earlier today, which councillor Wines misrepresented, is there are no downloadable timetables for the new bus network available on the TransLink Journey Planner now, because we've looked, and I would most certainly print them for my residents, but there are no downloadable timetables. None, zero.
Further speakers.
Just point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I ask-
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, I asked for information earlier about how long the City Reach Boardwalk would be closed, and that information has not been provided. So are you going to ensure it is?
No councillor, because there is no provision in meetings local law of when that will be provided. Further speakers. councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. Clause A in ENC outlines our city's budget allocations, but I must ask, who truly benefits from this report of contracts? In Callumbell Ward, it feels like we're perpetually drawing the short straw in what I call the infrastructure lottery. Our playgrounds in Parkinson and Alster are rust- aging, rusted and lack basic shade structures. Families report fences held together with cable ties and repairs that never come. Meanwhile, suburbs in the inner city receive multimillion-dollar upgrades with the best of everything. It's not Briz better, it's inequality. In fact, we just saw in the Brisbane Times this morning that the average income for half of our suburbs in our ward are half the average income for those in the inner city. And even the top 1% of the income earners in some of our suburbs in our Callumbell Ward are still a quarter of the top 1% of those in the inner city as well. But before I go further, let me highlight some hard facts showing how Briz isn't better and falling behind across the board because of this LNP coalition of chaos. Firstly, we're ranked as the worst capital city for public transport reliability, and I think what we heard from councillor Murphy just previously was a bit of a gaslight about the statistics and how it's a great project because we're getting contribution from all levels of government, but I think the thing to call out is that we actually need that because of the fact that we are the worst capital city for public transportation. Second to that as well is the increase that we have seen on patronage with services all across Brisbane. I think that's also quite consistent with the 50-cent fares policy that was introduced by the Miles Labor Government, and also thanks to Brisbane Labor's campaigning for half-price bus fares at the last council election. We're also second the highest urban traffic congestion costs, with Brisbane commuters losing on average 90 hours per year stuck in traffic. I heard that that's what councillor Cassidy went through this morning, just on the ICB on his way to work.
90 hours.
90 hours, that's what he said. Lowest rate of active transport is the third one for infrastructure investment among Australia's major cities, meaning fewer safe walking and also cycling options in our growing suburbs. And let's talk about the works we heard this morning for Viola Place after years of advocacy from cyclists. Number four is one of the highest rates of footpath damage and pedestrian injuries, a direct result of deferred maintenance, especially in our outer suburbs. And finally, we've got some of the slowest growth we're seeing in public green spaces, particularly in outer suburbs like Polara, where playgrounds and parks lag far behind population growth. Just to put it in perspective, we're asking for $400,000 for a basic traffic island and footpath covert extensions to improve safety near our local school. I'm hopeful that the Lord Mayor will soon meet with the principal and business manager to discuss these urgent needs.
Councillor, Kim, can you come back to what is actually in the report, please, and you can mention other things like that in general business?
Thank you. It was in relation to clause 14, contract 14, sorry, in clause A with the points that I just mentioned previously. And just to continue on, the two bus stops promised last financial year for Laxton Road have been pushed back again into the new calendar year, still no sign of progress. Yet, at the same time, the LNP has quietly slipped $2 million into the budget for a playground upgrade in a completely different suburb. There's no explanation for this lack of follow-through or transparency, and that's what exactly we would like to see more of, as we heard from councillor Johnston just previously. It's what parents in our outer suburbs deserve, honest answers and real action. But the lottery doesn't just stop at the parks, it's the roads, the footpaths and also the bus stops.
Councillor Kim, I've already asked you to come back to what is in the report, and you can refer to the other in your GB.
Thank you. In Heathwood, I do knock a woman in a wheelchair.
Councillor, I've advised you. Can you please come back to the report, what is actually in the report?
Thank you. I'm referring to clause, contract number six in relation to Rocks Riverside Park waterplay upgrade. I'm talking about the $2.8 million and comparing it to Heathwood, where I do want to walk to a woman in a wheelchair who told me-
Again councillor, no. Bring it back to Rocks Riverside Park, that's what's in the report.
Point of order.
Councillor Cassidy, point of order.
Would councillor Kim take a question?
Yes, I'll be happy to take a question. Thank you councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. Councillor Kim, thanks very much, Chair. Councillor Kim, through you, Madam Chair, I noted contract six in the contracts, there's a $2.8 million price for Rocks Riverside Park. Would you be able to detail how some of that money might be spent in your ward, in the Callumbell Ward?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Councillor, yes, point of order, councillor Wines.
Can I seek a ruling on the use of questions to go around rulings that you've made, and whether that's within the rules or an active disorder?
Yeah, I think it's not, and I think in this regard, anyway councillor Cassidy, I know and you can ask some people a question on something that they're talking about in other circumstances, but it is something that you may like to discuss and talk about in general business.
Point of order.
It's more suitable. Point of order councillor Cassidy.
Under the meetings local law, it's very clear that I can rise on a point of order through you, seek to ask a question of another councillor. If they accept that, which councillor Kim did, you then allow me to ask that question. You have to now allow councillor Kim to answer that question.
And yes, you may ask questions, but it's also up to me to decide what may be relevant in that particular circumstances, otherwise, as you can imagine, it could go anywhere. And I think that under these circumstances, we are coming, I would ask you to come back to the relevance in the report, and many councillors, including myself, when I am not in the chair, will talk about this type of thing in comparison in general business or in budget.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
So councillor Kim, I'm speaking councillor Johnston.
Sorry, I thought you'd finished.
So councillor, yes, I can refuse that permission, so in answer to your question councillor Cassidy.
What is the rule?
It's in section 4111?
No. Well, point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Madam Chairman, as the last few minutes will clearly demonstrate, and there's a recording, you did not refuse the question under section 11. What you've done is under section 12, refused to allow the councillor to answer the question. Now councillor Kim clearly wants to answer the question, and section 12 of section 41 says very clearly, the speaking councillor may elect to answer the question or refuse to. So councillor Kim clearly wants to answer the question councillor Cassidy asked, and you allowed him to ask. So Madam Chairman-
Councillor-
Why are you preventing councillor Kim from answering the question under 4112?
I do not uphold your point of order councillor, I do not uphold your point of order councillor. And councillor Kim, you may speak to the report, and you may continue to speak to the report. Councillor Cassidy, you changed your question around and you know very well what you were doing. And councillor Kim, you may speak in your report.
Thank you, Chair. I will take it to a different contract than within this clause.
Thank you. And councillor, your time has expired.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Point of order.
Point of order councillor.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes-
Protection racket of the regime.
-which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Silence in council.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney that the meeting adjourned for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber.
Further speaker on the ENC report, councillor Harton.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on item A, contracts and tendering for April 2025. Now, this month really reflects the breadth of services that council delivers across our city, services that support residents in every corner of our city, including some of our most unique and remote communities. One such place is Morton Island, where council has awarded a new contract for the Waste and Recovery Services. Morton Island, known as Mulgampen, is not only a treasured part of our city, but it's the third largest sand island in the world. It is a place of extraordinary natural beauty, but also one that presents a real logistical challenge when it comes to delivering waste services. As the Lord Mayor mentioned earlier, there are around 300 properties that exist on the island and numerous campers, and its lack of sealed roads and marine access presents a very unique challenge. Weather, tides and terrain all play a role in shaping how services are delivered, which is why this new arrangement is just so important. The new contract will deliver comprehensive waste services across the island, including a collection of general waste, recyclables, large items and batteries. It also covers the upkeep of our transfer stations and more than 50 bulk waste bins that are scattered all over the island. They will also help QFES manage controlled burns on the island and service several Queensland Park sites. It means that we've secured a coordinated solution for the entire island. The successful tenderer submitted the most comprehensive price and achieved the highest value for money. Most importantly, they demonstrated the experience, equipment and local understanding needed to operate in such a remote and environmentally sensitive space. It ensures the continuity of service for Morton Island residents and their visitors. And whilst we are delivering in the remote areas of our city, we are also delivering in our suburbs too. This report also details our investment into the slipform curb and channel machine. It replaces an older unit reaching its end-of-life operations and ensures that we can continue to deliver high-quality curbing across our network. It is a highly specialised piece of equipment, meaning that supply can be limited, however, the bid that came in under budget expectations, which is excellent news. I also want to touch on another piece of procurement, which is our Sen Sen network. Sen Sen currently supplies council with camera technology installed on both specialised compliance vehicles and on street pole access across the city. The cameras capture images with the potential of parking, with potential parking or advertising offences and ensure that they are detected. Imagery is then provided to an authorised officer who uses their delicate interface to review the evidence and determine whether an infringement should be issued. This also helps streamline our enforcement options, giving officers access to more robust data and speeds up the responses. But it's not just about efficiency, Chair, it's about safety. Earlier this year, one of our parking officers was threatened with a knife and had to escape from their parking enforcement on Kangaroo Point. This technology will also help remove officers from potentially confronting situations. Ultimately, it's all part of our plan to keep Brisbane moving. Now, Madam Chair, sorry, Deputy Chair, one of the most highly discussed items in the contract was the Rocks Riverside Water Play. Now, I just might take you on a bit of a history lesson. 22 years ago, the Lord Mayor at the time was Jim Sawley, and the local councillor was an ALP member Felicity Farmer. Now, it's kind of funny because those on that side of the chamber think it's terrible that we are spending $2 million on water play, infrastructure that was 22 years old. that we are spending $2 million on water play infrastructure that was 22 years old. Now, Deputy Chair, you may not realise that we have spent millions, millions of dollars. This administration, the Shrinna Council, has spent $22 million on Archerfield wetlands. And might I just ask, who do you think holds the ward of Archerfield wetlands? I think that is Steve Griffiths. That's the ALP. So the hypocrisy is not lost on me. And I do think that the investment that we are making in the water play at Rocks Riverside Park is well, well welcomed. And I do know that many of the people from across our city come and enjoy Rocks Riverside Park. And so the infrastructure upgrades will actually mean that we will keep ensuring that the playground keeps open and, uh, and we can have many, many more years of enjoyment there. Thank you.
Any further speaker? Councillor Strong.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. This, or Deputy Chair, sorry. The Councillor Hutton just said that the upgrade was like $2 million. Well, it's 2.8, so please send me the $800,000, because I can do a lot with that, I'll tell you. But anyways, I want to speak on contract, sort of speak on contract three in regards to the Beams Road upgrade. Now, um, you learn a lot in the debate, right? What I didn't know, even though I have sat in on about three presentations on Bean Roads upgrades, the various, various progressive, progressive, progress ones. Sorry, didn't get that right either. Anyways, I'll leave it go. And, uh, and none of those actually explained the fact that that was broken up into three different stages because, uh, because no contractor, there was only one contractor bid. And, uh, and they, so they broke it up so that the other contractors, who maybe don't have as large a companies, could bid on those upgrades. Now, I didn't know that, but I think that's really false savings as well. Because, you know, if you, if you spread out a, uh, a, uh, a, um, project, right? Probably longer, breaking it up into three sections, right? You're probably, um, you're probably not getting good value for money because you're spreading it out and of course, cost of, especially with COVID interceded in this, in this upgrade as well, costs a lot more money, you know, after, because I think I've, I think I've sat into, so the previous term, I saw two presentations, and in this term, I've seen one in infrastructure. So that's like six years, you know, and of course, the cost of materials and everything else has just skyrocketed. So it's really false savings, really. Maybe should have given it to the original contractor, right? It would probably be done and dusted by now, and at a lot cheaper price. But we'll never know, of course, we'll never know. Now, in regards to, um, in regards to the, um, uh, there was one here for Mitchelton Youth Club, which was kind of an interesting, um, uh, once we started looking into it and having a look at their website and everything and what they do down there, which is really terrific. And it was built in 1940, right, which is a fair time ago, it's not quite 80 years, but it is a fair time ago. And they're looking to, uh, uh, looking at, well, just under a million dollars really to improve the, uh, improve the, uh, or do some structural repairs. Well, I suppose after all that time, it needs structural repairs. So, uh, but I don't know what those structural repairs are, of course, it doesn't really tell you. But I, I, I think it's money well spent, and this is what we should be doing in all of our facilities that are under lease, is to make sure, unlike the one over in Acacia Ridge that councillor Griffiths, uh, has told us about, um, on a number of occasions, which they didn't really look after, we didn't look after our asset there, basically. That's what it boiled down to, and we expected someone else to do that. But anyways, it's, uh, it's, uh, I'm sure that the, uh, the current leaseholders, and they do a lot of gymnastics there, I believe, um, which is probably one of the few around Brisbane that does, undertakes that work with youth. In regards to the Rocks River, um, Waterway Park upgrade or renewal, it's, it's, uh, I know one of my team, she used to take her kids there when they were, when they were growing up, and they really loved it. It was a lovely little water park for, for the youngies. And, uh, but I don't know why it's going to cost so much money to sort of upgrade it. If we would have kept the maintenance up on it over that period of the 22 years, right? I'm sure we wouldn't have ended up with a bill of $2.8 million, right? I mean, listen, we're talking pumps, we're talking, you know, plumbing, we're talking, I mean, all these sorts of things can be upgraded as you go forward, right? And do a regular maintenance and things like that, so you don't end up having to renew the whole thing. Really from scratch almost, I would think, but I don't know how much that, unfortunately, Councillor Hutton's already spoke, so we won't be able to get that information. But, um, no, it's, it's a really great park, the kids love it, I know. But I think we could have handled the ongoing maintenance, it's a lot better. Yeah, anyways. So, um, and with what time I have left, which is very little, which is not very much, I should say, the, um, the, uh, I'm just trying to remember what this, this was actually, the, oh, the weed management.
Councillor Strong, your time has expired.
Oh, I was going to speak about the leg.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on item A, contracts and tendering in support of several, several important projects that highlight the Shrinna Council's commitment to working for a greener, safer and more resilient city and to continue to make Brisbane's lifestyle even better. And these initiatives, ranging from the revitalisation of a much-loved park to enhancing our environmental information systems and maintaining our waterways reflect our vision for a city that thrives for all residents. Deputy Chair, the first contract I'll speak to is one that's had a bit of interest today. I can assure the chamber that the Rocks Riverside Parkland's water play upgrade is funded in Programme Three budget. In fact, the Lord Mayor spoke about it in his budget speech last year alongside a number of other projects. Of course, councillors that attended the information session for Programme Three had every opportunity to ask more questions about the Rocks Riverside Parkland upgrade and clearly chose not to. I hope that answers the question for councillor Johnston. Madam Chair, rather Deputy Chair, Rocks Riverside is a much-loved park that has evolved from farmland and industrial uses into one of our city's premier green spaces. With 800 metres of riverfrontage and spanning 26 hectares, it offers everything from a flying fox and bike paths to an amphitheatre. And the subject of this contract, of course, is the ever-popular water play facility. This water play area has served the community, as councillor Hutton said, for well over 22 years, far beyond the typical lifespan of 10 to 15 years. But even with the greatest care and attention, age catches up with us all. And that's why we're embarking on an upgrade of the water play facility, replacing critical underground infrastructure like the hydraulics, filtration systems and electrical components, while retaining the existing pools and streams that families love. The splash pad will be modernised with shade and new water features, ensuring that the space is safer, more reliable and ready for the next generation of Brisbane kids. And I know councillor Hutton, that not only your local community, but the communities that surround, who enjoy Rocks Riverside, will be very excited by this project going ahead. Works are set to begin in July 2025, with the aim of reopening in time for the summer school holidays. This investment is more than just an upgrade, it's a reminder of our commitment to maintaining our city's parks for the long term. So there's always more to see and do, and always way to enjoy our enviable subtropical lifestyle. Alongside creating great places to play, we're also meeting the challenges of a changing climate. And this is where our environmental information system and the Floodwise platform is absolutely critical. Deputy Chair, Floodwise is Brisbane's trusted source of flood information, helping residents understand their risks, access historical and real-time data and make informed choices for their properties. It's a vital tool that supports Brisbane's disaster management responsibilities. We've been working with Aquatic Informatics Australia, which is the provider of Floodwise since 2011. This partnership that we've had has delivered a world-class system that is now used by other governments across Australia and marketed globally. Recently, we tested the market through a public RFI to see whether there were other potential alternatives for an environmental information system that could not just handle the flood data, but also bushfire drought and coastal risk. And after thorough analysis, it became clear that no other solution offered the same value for money, the capabilities and also compatibility with our existing systems. As the Lord Mayor said earlier, Aquatics offers insured stability with a 31% discount off the licence fee price and fixed hosting, administration and support costs for a maximum of a 10-year contract. The contract will ensure that Brisbane's residents continue to have access to accurate, reliable flood information while allowing us to explore future innovations like integrating additional environmental data. It's the smart, future-proof choice for our city. Finally, I'd like to touch, um, on something that doesn't always make the headlines, but it's absolutely critical for the health of our parks and waterways, and that's the aquatic weed management. Deputy Chair, you may be aware that we manage 42 lakes and water bodies across 30 parks throughout our city. And these include sites like the City Botanic Gardens, Dows Lagoon in Sandgate, and the lakes at Sherwood Arboretum. Maintaining these spaces requires a year-round effort. And we take a multifaceted approach to this by chemical control.
Councillor Davis, your time has expired. Further speaker, Councillor Griffiths.
Oh, wow, isn't this, uh, isn't this a piece of work for people who aren't working? To bring this, this contract through is incredible. I speak, I will be speaking on a number of items in this particular piece today. But I just want to start with a summary of what's going on in this council and a bit of a history. Last week, we saw cuts of $500 million to the budget, cuts in services. We've seen cuts of 554 staff in the last year. We've seen the Story Bridge footpaths closed. And when I read the reports, the report I read, I don't think the Lord Mayor's read it, it says catastrophic. It says the bridge is catastrophic, as it says it 12 times, catastrophic. Somewhere along the line, the Lord Mayor has missed that message. But I suppose what concerns me all in this contract here, or in these contracts here, is there's not anything for a travel agency. And what we need is a travel agency contract for our well-travelled LMP councillors. Our well-travelled LMP councillors, the Lord Mayor's off to New York, business class.
Councillor Griffiths, can you, can you come back to the report?
Mr. Chair, did you get a text telling you to pull him up? Is that the Deputy Mayor-
Please come back to the report.
On her well-travelled trip from Japan, the postcards to Japan trip, or the postcards from Japan trip. Of course, we are other councillors, including, we're going to have other councillors who travel to-
Councillor Griffiths, Councillor Griffiths, when I speak, you cease speaking. And please come back to the report. You are not here to go around the world. Please come back to the ENC report. It is not in the report. Councillor Griffiths, please sit.
Okay, I'll come back to report. But my, my point was, I think in contracting, we need to have someone looking out for the best deals for these people because they've got their snouts in the trough in terms of rate payers' money for overseas travel. But let's go back to the issues here. And we have water play, um, was mentioned. How lucky I am to get water play out of Acacia Ridge in a park that we use the environment levy to pay for. We use 10 million or 11 million of the environment levy to pay for a playground. Doesn't go down well to punters when you tell them we bought no bushland this year, no bushland this year. But we've spent $11 million on playground equipment that probably should have been paid for from the infrastructure fund. But let's put that aside. The water play, um, feature out at Gindley is a great idea. And in fact, I was here when councillor Farmer lobbied for it, and when a Labor councillor built that great playground. And it's a great playground, it's really loved, it's very beautifully up-kept. In fact, one of the most beautifully up-kept parks in the city. So it's interesting that $2.8 million is being spent on that, on replacing that equipment. I have water play in my park at Mortimer Road that hasn't worked for years. We can't get anyone to do it up. There's no $2.8 million to help do that up. Same in Brighton. How many other people in the city have water play equipment that is not maintained or has disappeared? Anyone on that side of the chamber? No, no one on that side of the chamber. Strange that. So well done, yes, you're looking after yourselves again. Let's go on to the greener city, oh, let's skip greener city for a minute, let's go to tree maintenance services. And yesterday, I was fascinated with tree maintenance services when I, I drove past a park and there was this beautiful Port Jackson figure that's been there, historic park for a long time, doing quite well. And on Monday, I drove past and it was gone. Stump. It was a stump. I asked the officers, I asked three officers, where, why, why have we got a stump in the park? Well, it goes stump in the park because a cyclone came along apparently and had to be removed. No notification to myself, no notification to my office. What the officers tell me is that we're taking out trees we shouldn't be taking out and not taking out trees that we should be taking out. And that's how council's working. And on top of that, we've got a $20 million slush fund, slush fund, an LMP slush fund of unspent tree money that isn't planting trees. So we've got bushland money that isn't buying bushland, and we've got tree money that isn't planting trees. What are we doing? Oh, we're running a travel agency for LMP councillors for their lovely overseas holidays. Just incredible. I'd like to see this council, this administration, get back and have some passion for the residents of Brisbane, because God knows, you're missing in action out there. Thank you.
Any further speaker? Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. And, um, I'd like to rise to speak on item A, as opposed to some of the other talk that we've heard here. I think it might have been the hero, Mr. Sawley, that had a very, very long overseas trip. But we won't talk about that because, you know, that's all what's, I reported on Paris beautifully. You really enjoyed my correspondence. So through you, Mr. Deputy Chair, I will try not to be distracted by those on the other side who certainly are distracting. Anyway, item A, contracts and tendering, and the reports of contracts accepted by delegates of council from April 2025, and in particular, numbers five and 11 in that report. Firstly, to number five, contract number CW16279 for the structural repairs at Mitchelton Youth Club. Now, this is very close to councillor Wine's heart, and this is awarding a contract for approximately $900,000 to ProBuild Industries Australia to deliver structural repairs to the Mitchelton Youth Club. Mitchelton Youth Club is an important hub in the local community that provides gymnastics programmes to more than 850 children and adults. Operating for more than 80 years now, it is an important hub in the local community, especially for young girls and women, with 60% of their users being female. We were pleased to secure funding through the Queensland Government, through the Community and Recreational Assets Recovery and Resilience Programme to address some structural issues identified at the club. The total value of works being delivered at the club is approximately $2 million, with council contributing 33% of the total cost. In May, council's construction teams completed the first stage of works, which included facility stump replacement, stormwater and hydraulic improvements, new accessible concrete pathways to the main entrance and around the building, retaining walls, relocation of the storage shed, improvements to curb ramp and overland flow and new turf. The contract before us in item A will see ProBuild deliver the second and final stage of works, including full roof replacement, construction of a new external staircase, internal structural repairs and improvements to bring areas to necessary facility standards, and the refurbishment of the ground floor office. Works will be commencing this month with completion due in October, and we have been working closely with the club to ensure these works can be delivered whilst minimising impacts to their gymnastics programmes. Deputy Chair, to number 11 in the report, contract number CW20165, Lord Mayor's Christmas Carols 2025 to 27, production and event management agreement. The Lord Mayor's Christmas Carols has been bringing Brisbane families together for over 13 years to celebrate the joy and spirit of Christmas. Following expiry of the last contract in December last year, council went out to market seeking a producer or creative organisation to develop, program and deliver the Lord Mayor's Christmas carols for this year and for the next two years. I'm pleased to support the item before us today. I'm pleased to support the item before us today, which will see the contract awarded to Riser, a production and event management company that operates nationally and internationally with offices in Brisbane, Sydney, and Singapore. Riser has a wealth of experience in delivering large-scale creative public programming, events, and broadcast projects with a 20-year track record of delivering successful events here and abroad. They have worked with Tourism Australia, Tourism and Events Queensland, and other major local governments in capital cities such as the city of Sydney and the city of Melbourne, and also have experience in delivering iconic events for major companies and brands like the Fifa Women's World Cup. They've also worked with Nine Queensland to deliver amazing shows like The Voice. We are very much looking forward to seeing what Riser is able to achieve for this year's Christmas carols, which is set to feature both local and national headlining artists. And of course, it'll be for the whole family to enjoy, including an exciting partnership with Sony Music. And with that, Deputy Chair, I recommend item A to the chamber.
Any further speaker? Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Chair. I rise to speak just briefly on item A. In April, we continued to back local business in Brisbane with our buy-local procurement policy, with 72 out of the 73 contracts entered into being with local suppliers right here in our amazing city of Brisbane. It brings in total to 174 contracts this financial year so far that have all been with local suppliers, which is just under 99% of all contracts. Local contracts means local jobs, which means local employment for people who live here in Brisbane. It is well in excess of our 80% target, and it's a testament to the vision of the Lord Mayor and the work of our procurement office here in council. Mr. Deputy Chair, every time this report comes through the chamber, those opposite have something negative to say. They come in here and they talk down our city, and they talk down the council officers who work with local suppliers to get the job done for residents. Whether they complain about having too many contracts, or maybe it's not enough, they always find a way to make a cheap shot, cherry pick and play petty politics.
Deputy Mayor, point over to Council Cassidy.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
Noted. Yep, Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Chair. Furthermore, what they have seemed to completely overlook today, very conveniently, is that the E N C agenda from last week that is received by every councillor in this chamber had five items on it. If they really cared, they would be paying attention to the reports that they have access to, but they don't. We've heard that already today. They come in here and they play silly games, and they take away from the amazing work that council does for the residents of Brisbane.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor, yes, point of order.
It goes to relevance, what the deputy mayor is talking about has nothing to do with the contracts on clause A.
Deputy Mayor, can you come back to the report?
It has everything to do with the contracts, the 73 contracts that went, contracts which went to local suppliers. But that seems to have been completely overlooked by councillor Strunk and the other councillors, and I commend this report to the chamber.
Further speaker? Oh, sorry, Council Cassidy, your misrepresentation.
Thanks very much, Chair. The deputy mayor suggested, said that I was critical of council officers. I was very clear that my criticism is levelled at the LMP regime, and if the deputy mayor thinks that all council officers are now somehow part of her political party, that just goes to my point that this is now a regime.
Any further speaker? It says no more further speaker, I'll put the E N C report to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those that can say no, the ayes have it.
Division.
Seconded.
Division called by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Kim. Those in favour to my right, against to my left, please ring the bell. Clark, please read the result.
Mr. Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 15 in favour and five abstentions.
The report's passed. Council Murphy, Transport Committee report.
I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 27th of May, be adopted.
Seconded.
It was moved by Council Murphy, seconded by Council Perry, that the report of the Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 27th May, 2025, be adopted. Council Murphy.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. Last week, the Transport Committee heard all about the Buranda Busway Station upgrade, which was delivered as part of Brisbane Metro. To facilitate Brisbane Metro, the existing busway tunnel at Buranda was effectively deconstructed and then reconstructed. The inbound and outbound platforms were extended by both more than 20 metres, increasing the station capacity and enabling future growth. Of course, Buranda being a key point of interchange for suburban services onto metro services now. As always, the team worked collaboratively with the Brisbane Metro Accessibility Working Group to ensure the station would be suitable for everyone and accessible. Since concluding major works, the sentiment from both bus drivers and users of the station has been overwhelmingly positive. All the infrastructure works we have delivered as part of the Brisbane Metro project have improved the area more broadly as well. Buranda is no exception. The architectural finishing works, the landscaping, all of it continues to be undertaken and improved. The infrastructure upgrades, such as the one that we've done to Buranda Station, I'll say, Deputy Chair, are one of the most impressive parts of the project, and hopefully councillors can see, if they've been to the Cultural Centre Station, the now open Platform Three, and that beautiful, modern, at-grade Cultural Centre Station, as well as the improvements that we see all the time outside our place of work, City Hall. You can see the subtropical boulevard taking place, the sheer amount of street furniture, old, rotting street furniture that's been replaced and updated and modernized as part of the metro project. It's been incredible to see. So it's not just big stations like Buranda, it's all parts of our network that are receiving critical upgrades as part of Brisbane Metro. Of course, we know, as we heard earlier, Chair, and we've heard for many weeks now, that on the 30th of June, Brisbane's new bus network will begin and a new era of public transport will commence in Brisbane, one that means less congestion, more services, and a more reliable network. The upgraded Buranda Busway Station will help us to facilitate this city-making project, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the incredible project team that worked on this element of the work. I would also like to thank the very, very patient residents of the eastern suburbs of Brisbane who have put up with the long closure of half of O'Keefe Street. We know that that has been an inconvenience to many, but major projects like this are short-term pain for long-term gain, and certainly from the 30th of June, when it's turn-up-and-go time, there'll be nowhere to hide. Thanks very much, Deputy Chair.
Any further speaker? It says no further speaker, I'll now put the Transport Committee report to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those that can say no, the ayes have it. Council Wine's Infrastructure Committee.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I move the report of the...
Sorry, point of order.
I would just like to separate, I'm sorry, call for Terry Arton for voting purposes.
You have to speak after the motion's been moved.
My apologies.
Yeah, Council Wine's.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So I move the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 27th of May, 2025, be adopted.
Seconded, Mr. Deputy Chair.
It was moved by Council Wine's, seconded by Council Toomey, that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 27th May, 2025, be adopted.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. We had a...
Point of order.
Yeah, point of order.
Can I please call for Terry Arton for all items in Terry Arton, please, for voting purposes?
Noted. All items being taken in Terry Arton for voting purpose. Council Wine's.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So we are here seeing a report regarding a presentation we received on automated flooded road warning systems, which have been part of our, part of our road network in response to the 2022 floods. As part of that, there are more than 40 locations across the city that have these signs in place, 44 to be exact, and they can be in either coastal or tidal areas, low-lying areas, river floodplains, or flood-prone road corridors. And the purpose of the sign is to stay blank, but then light up to advise cars of potential dangers or road closures ahead of them. So between the first of October 2024 and the 23rd of March 2025, councils A F R W S were activated 220 times for a total of 5,054 hours across all sites. There, we were able to capture more than 10,000 images of flooded roads and email more than 21,000 email notifications to affected residents. During ex-tropical Cyclone Alfred, there were 63 separate A F R W S activations over that 14-day period. That means some turned on and then off again through the period, with 2,014 active hours across all sites. The longest activation occurred at Lansing Street, Paulon Vale, recording 257 active hours. The total of 7,497 email notifications were sent to affected residents, and more than 4,000 photographs were taken so we could track and monitor issues in particular areas. These are part of a program to respond to two things. Firstly, the speed with which we can address these matters and to ensure that we can get signs on both sides. So I know councillors have heard, we discussed this before, but one of the problems that we had in closing some roads in the past was actually getting to the location, and the fact that to close the road successfully, there has to be closed, road close signs on both sides, and oftentimes, we were unable to get to the other side of the, the other side of the watercourse once it's there. These signs allow for centralized automated responses, so a person can sit here in George Street and using the camera system monitor that there's in fact water across the road and automate them. What used to be, what used to be potentially a drive in very difficult conditions now can be done remotely, increasing the safety for motorists, but also our, our teams who are responsible for these sorts of things. So it has been, one of the things that, one of the reasons I want to bring this presentation through was that there was a number of questions when we talked about the cyclone and flood response from earlier in the year about how certain things operate. So how do the solar power operate, how the batteries operate, how the communications systems operate? And so it was, I know that comforting to me, and I trust many members of the committee to hear that where there's cloud cover, that still that ambient light does allow for the replenishment of the batteries, and the batteries can last for up to 30 days. So those two facts provided myself, and I say many members of the committee comfort with the knowledge that these, that if there's an extended rain period with limited light, these signs will continue to operate, continue to provide a safer interaction with the road and protect people from going into flooded roads. There were three petitions considered. I anticipate we'll be hearing parts about them. The first one was a review of safety on roads in Kedron, Stafford and Stafford Heights. There is a petition for a yellow line in Arunya Road, Ash Grove, and a petition for Waterton and Venna and Ipswich Roads, Annally. Each drew their own level of interest through the committee. I trust that the debate in the coming moments will be relevant and interesting.
Any further debate? Council Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. Listen, I rise to speak on items A and B. The flood warning devices, the automated flood warning devices that councillor Wine's has just spoken about. The original, the original presentation, which was before the last, let me see, was that before the last flood or? Anyway, so original presentation about these flood warning devices that were being rolled out, I did have some concerns about the battery and the battery life and how long the, they would last, especially with long rain periods because they're solar-powered, of course. And so I raised my concerns, but I was told at the time that it, you know, it'll be, it'll be all right, it'll be fine. Solar power works even at night time from the moon and the stars. But I was so happy to hear that in this presentation that they've upgraded the batteries for a much longer life, so that won't be an issue anymore, so great to hear that. Regardless of the petition, there was those five locations that councillor Wine's alluded to, that the petitioners are looking for upgrades for safety. The one that was, that, that I didn't agree with the recommendation, right, and caucus didn't either, was the roundabout, the upgrade to the roundabout at, at Appleby, Appleby Road at Stafford Heights. Now, there isn't any, there isn't any way for pedestrians to actually safely cross the road, that, those four crossings, or lack thereof. And so I think there should be at least a sit-down on both, on, on all four sides, I would think, for people in wheelchairs and things like that, which would be very helpful, but there isn't, and/or maybe a refuge or two, or at least one refuge anyways, which would be very helpful. I have one that was recently done a couple of years ago out my way, and it's really made it very safe for that roundabout now for people to go across to the shops. So anyways, we won't be supporting that petition. Thank you, Chair.
Any further speaker? Council Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I rise to speak on item G, which is the petition requesting council fund safety upgrades at the intersection of Waterton Street and Venna Road and Ipswich Road, Annally. So councillors have heard me speak about this intersection at budget time for, I'd say, the last decade at least, and the LMP has repeatedly refused to fund an intersection upgrade at this location. This is an arterial road that carries around 65,000 vehicles a day on Ipswich Road, and tens of thousands on both Venna Road and Waterton Road, which are the east-west connections across Ipswich Road. The pedestrian access is extremely poor, and there are no dedicated turning lanes for vehicles, which mean vehicles are right out into the middle of the intersection trying to get round. Sightlines are poor because of the hill, and essentially, this is a dangerous intersection where there are numerous crashes, where we know that thousands of people cross the road every day, not hundreds, but thousands of people cross the road every day. In response to the petitioner's requests, council's response is basically to do nothing. To do nothing. There's $2.8 million to upgrade the water play over at Rocks Riverside Park, but there's no money to improve road and pedestrian safety at one of Brisbane's most dangerous intersections. So that's something that I'll be sharing with residents in Annally. It says here again that council acknowledges there are congestion concerns across the intersection. You don't say council. I mean, it's a no-brainer. It's been a problem for as long as I have been here. It's been an issue that I have campaigned on every single day since I was first elected. It's an issue that this council has neglected, to the point where we have seen people die both on Ipswich Road trying to cross the road and die on Venna Road trying to cross the road as pedestrians. Three, four deaths, four deaths in the time that I have been the councillor, two on Ipswich Road and two on Venna Road. And this is not acceptable. And to the, to this situation where we have vehicle congestion, pedestrian safety, we get, due to a high demand for road network improvements throughout Brisbane, all proposed upgrades must be prioritised. must be prioritized to ensure council resources are directed to areas most in need of traffic management works." Now, I sit on the Construction Committee, and I ask most weeks, okay, what's the priority of this intersection? Every time that a presentation comes through, that councillor Wines wants to talk up and say how fabulous it is, I say, well, what's the priority of this intersection? The officers look at you with a blank face and go, it's important, councillor. But all intersections are prioritized. You should be able to tell me where it sits on the list. Blank. No response from councillor Wines. This is not unusual. I have to stand here and listen time and time again to the 257 million, I think it is up to, on the Mogal Road Roundabout Project, after it was supposed to cost 120, so more than double. That intersection at Mogal Road has had 25 crashes over seven years. So 25 crashes over seven years. Any idea how many are happening on Ipswich Road? About 100 per year, 100 per year, not over seven years, per year. So clearly, priority is not being given in the way that it is said in this report. What is in this report is absolutely false information. I have no doubt about that. And I don't believe that council does prioritize intersections based on the need, based on the accident history, based on the crash history. This council prioritizes intersection upgrades based on your membership of a political party, or where the LMP administration think they can win seats. And this is the great shame of every council officer who sits there and says nothing about the LMP's politicization of this, of this council's budget. This is the great shame of every council officer that sits there and says nothing when roads where people are dying, dying, do not get upgraded. Where in the western suburbs, where there are less accidents, where there are less people dying, you get a Rolls-Royce road upgrade, but you can't get it where in Annolly, on the south side, where it would save lives and help improve traffic congestion. So we know that officers are being directed by the Lord Mayor and senior LMP staff.
Council Johnston, your term has expired.
And it's not on.
Any further speaker? Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Chair. I rise just to speak very briefly on item A, which is the automated flooded road warning system. Unfortunately, like many councillors in this chamber, my ward is no stranger to flooding. That's why I was really pleased to have one of these flood warning signs installed at Gladys Street in Stones Corner, which is just behind the library there. Gladys Street, which is on the banks of Norman Creek, also has a very busy car park attached to it. So the system includes LED road signs that display highly visible early warning messages to residents, and it's made possible by the water level sensor, which is activated when the, when is, which is activated when there is some flooding. It means the risk of losing vehicles is reduced, but importantly, it also heightens community awareness to this particular car park and street, which after just a little bit of rain has a tendency to go underwater just because of how close it is in fact to Norman Creek. So thank you to councillor Wines and to all the council officers who have really helped my community in making sure that they can be better prepared and respond for when severe weather happens in our city. Thank you. I commend it.
Further speaker? Council Griffiths.
Oh, yes, Mr. Chair. There's always a lot to say on these issues. So we would like first off to, to support the words of the deputy mayor in relation to the flood warning devices. So I think it's actually good that we are seeing these devices added to the city, and certainly my ward is impacted by flooding too. I have raised in the past the need for these devices on Bodeset Road, where it still is a, a council road, and that's down through Rockleigh. And what we have is four lanes of traffic cut when it floods down there, and we have no devices or no warning for the regular, the cuts that happen with stable Swamp Creek flooding that section of road. So I would say, great work. We've still got plenty more to do, council, so don't, don't be sitting back enjoying your, your praise too much. Get on and do the other areas of our city that need it. In relation to the other item I want, wish to speak about, it's the intersection of Waterton Street, Vener Road and Ipswich Road, and councillor Johnston and I ran a joint petition calling for this intersection to be upgraded. This is a section of road that carries between 60 and 80,000 vehicles a day. It's on the crest of a hill. It's, it's just so strategic to our communities in terms of traffic flow and, and not just vehicle traffic, but also freight traffic as well. So it was very disappointing that council has rejected what the residents have wanted and rejected what we as local councillors see the area needs. And once again, once again from this administration, we're seeing these cuts. So we're seeing the $500 million cut from delivery of infrastructure and services. And no one spoke last week about that. They will just go, even one of the chairpersons, one of the chairpersons go, did we do cuts last week? One of the chairpersons in committee today said that. Incredible. I can't believe. But anyway, I won't say who that is, so I won't embarrass them. But there was, we've had staff, we've had over 500 staff cut, and staff know it. Our officers watched this meeting, they know it. Our service times, we don't have service times anymore for anything. We don't have service times for anything anymore. The story bridge is crumbling. It's literally crumbling. There's going to be a toll on it. It is just incredible the way this city is falling apart. And we've got a bus service that's being introduced that cost us $1.7 billion of ratepayer money, ratepayer money, not any other government's money, that we're going to give back to the state, and then we're giving shocking services to residents. And we had today, the Lord Mayor and his chairperson couldn't actually tell us, say no, how many bus stops are being cut, but they won't provide that list. Now, I've asked for that through CEO's office. It's coming. But you would think as administration, if you're so proud of what you're doing, then you would stand and go, yes, we're cutting these, but we're putting these in. But it's not happening. So getting back to Vener Road and Ipswich Road, this is a key intersection that has been listed for the 22 years I've been in this council, waiting for it to be done. We've just approved an extra 20,000 people down on the Magic Mile, with no new parks, of course. We've approved that, but we're not fixing up this major intersection. This is not a city being run well. This is not smart. This is not good for our community. And I just find, councillor Johnston's been here a long time as well, that the residents are saying, what's going on in council? I know the staff are saying, what's going on in council? The staff are, the staff are calling it the Titanic. Staff actually call council the Titanic. So I, I, I am really disappointed with this response. It doesn't meet our city's needs. It doesn't answer infrastructure for long term, and really doesn't deliver what we should be doing as a council for our city.
Your term has expired. Any further speaker? Council Wines wrote a reply.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to respond to some of the comments made earlier about some of the petitions. So as we heard, there was, there was quite a bit of discussion around the third petition, which was the Waterton, the Waterton, Vener and Ipswich Road. However, I will respond to statements about the Kedron Stafford one first, and I'd like to draw the attention of the council to the fact that we have reviewed the pedestrian crossings around Will Garnings Street and Appleby Road. And it's acknowledged the intersection has challenges due to available space and alignment of pedestrian crossing facilities, and the location is listed for further investigation, improvements, and consideration for funding in future budgets. So it's been identified, the petitioners have succeeded in their objective of bringing this to our attention. There are limitations on that location, which will mean more significant work is required in preparation of any, of work if it were to occur there, and that's been identified and, as I say, identified and listed as part of, in response to that petition. Also, on the matter of Waterton, which is part of the Ipswich Road corridor, some of the things that weren't mentioned is that in, as part of our response, council acknowledges that Ipswich Road is part of our long-term road planning system. It's there to, we intend to improve safety and capacity through this road corridor, including at that particular intersection. However, at this point, there are, there are other works that we have, we'll be doing in advance of this, and so at this time, again, the concerns of residents are acknowledged, the merit of their concerns is acknowledged, and also we've also identified that we will be improving Ipswich Road in the future to respond to increased pressures and to improve safety at that intersection. So I thank all councillors for their, for their contributions, partially relevant, somewhat interesting, and I commend them, I commend these to the chamber.
I now put the item A of the Infrastructure Committee report to the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those that can say no? The ayes have it.
Division.
No one seconded it? I, I now put item B of the Infrastructure Committee report to the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those that can say no?
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Strong. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Please ring the bell. Clerk, please read the result.
Mr. Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favor, four against, and two abstentions.
Item B is passed. Councillors, please return to your seat. I now put item C of the Infrastructure Committee report to the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those that can say no? The ayes have it.
Division.
Sec, division, sorry.
Division called by councillor Chongwa, seconded by councillor Johnston. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Please ring the bell. Clerk, please read the result.
Mr. Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 21 in favor.
Item C has passed. I now put item D of the Infrastructure Committee report to the vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those that can say no?
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy, seconded by councillor Johnston. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Please ring the bell. Clerk, please read the result.
Mr. Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favor and six against.
The report is carried. Councillor Allen, City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. Mr. Deputy Chair, I move to the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 27th of May, 2025 be adopted?
Seconded.
He was moved by councillor Allen, seconded by councillor Wolf. Another report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting dated Tuesday 27th May, 2025 be adopted. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Chair. Before moving to the committee report, for the benefit of the chamber, I'd like to provide an update regarding the monthly stats for the Development Services team. For the month of May, there were 326 development applications completed. 63 of these approved, these approved applications were for material change of use or residential use. This resulted in a net increase of 1,095 dwellings. There are two notable DAs that contributed to the high number of dwellings in May, and these included 11 Sangay Road Albion, which had 199 units, and 21 Wellington Street East Brisbane with 712 units. Madam Chair, financial year-to-date, Development Services have approved the total of 10,592 dwellings. And as I'm sure you're aware, the southeast Queensland regional plan intends for Brisbane to deliver an additional 210,800 dwellings by 2046. This constitutes an average of 8,432 dwellings per year. Council have already eclipsed this target for the year. However, the issue now lies in the industry constructing these homes for the market in what is a difficult construction environment with high costs and low productivity. The Srinagar Council will continue to do everything it can to provide suitable housing for our growing population while supporting the economic, economic needs of our growing city today and into the future. Now, we're turning to the committee presentation. It was a development site located at 286 St Paul's Terrace Fortitude Valley. Members of the chamber may know this particular site. It's the old RACQ site on St Paul's Terrace in the valley. After years of it having ceased operation, the site has become rundown and requires a new lease of life. The material change of use was for a multiple dwelling and centre activities. The site will deliver 164 units and 415 square metres of commercial space. The site has three street frontages and is close to Fortitude Valley Train Station, St Teneri Aquatic Centre, as well as Bedford and Victoria Parks. The 28-story tower will provide additional density in a well-service location. Building features include an articulated facade with recesses, curved forms, and a variation in balconies, an activated podium, creative lighting, integrated landscaping on the ground floor and rooftop, including 13.7% deep planting, and upgrades to site streetscape while retaining existing street trees. The development looks set to reinvigorate this part of the valley, which I'm sure councillor Howard is looking forward to. There was one petition considered by the committee and supported unanimously, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I just rise to briefly talk on the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee report, and just say to councillor Allen through here, I appreciate the statistics that he has brought here today on the number, the monthly update statistics. We appreciate that, and would appreciate that in an ongoing way. It's very constructive information for us to know and to track council's work in approving and hopefully seeing the fruition of development applications resulting in more housing. It's just interesting that we have asked for those stats on, in questions on notice, and the answer we've been given is that it's and the answer we've been given is that it's, we need, just need to go and look at them ourselves and the officers aren't able to provide that information. So if it comes through councillor Allen each month, then we will accept that and appreciate that, those, that data going forward. On two eighty-six St Paul's Terrace, Fortitude Valley, this is one that has received significant financial incentives from Brisbane City Council through the one and two-bedroom unit infrastructure charge discounts. I think it was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so in discounts for the building, should it proceed. And, and the, obviously, the idea behind that policy, which we supported, is to see more of these developments proceed from, from application to approval to construction. So we would like to see, through you, Chair, to councillor Allen, provide not just those general stats, but also going forward, progress on these, these development applications, because we supported that policy, wanting to see an outcome, wanting to see more housing delivered, and this, as a mix of one, two, three and four-bedroom units here will provide good variety in a well-located area. We, you know, desperately want to see this development come out of the ground and go on sale and become homes for people or rental properties as homes for people or for people to buy as well. So we wholeheartedly support this and, and do appreciate what councillor Allen's provided and encourage him to continue to do so.
Further speakers. No further speakers, councillor Allen. We'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against no? The ayes have it.
Division.
Seconded, division.
Has been called by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Gibney. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being twenty in favour.
The motion is carried. Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting of Tuesday, twenty-seven May, twenty twenty-five be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Davis and seconded by councillor Marks, that the report of the Environment, Parks and Sustainability Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-seventh of May, twenty twenty-five be adopted. Councillor Davis. Councillor Davis, can you just try your mic again?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee presentation last week was a really interesting one, and it was on the historical overview of E.E. McCormick Place. This particular park is made up of two parcels of land at eighteen Eagle Terrace, Brisbane, on the northern side of the Brisbane River. It's also next to the William Jolly Bridge and Coronation Drive to the south and Upper Roma Street to the north, but people probably would recognise it more as that triangular park in the centre opposite the, the fire station at Roma Street. The park contains portions of Brisbane's first burial ground, although much of it lies under what is now Skew Street, and is recognised on the State Heritage Register and on the Brisbane City Plan twenty fourteen heritage overlay. The park holds several commemorative objects and plaques, and is probably best known for the Heelix-shaped fountain that was designed by Nicholas Seffron. Prior to European settlement, the area was a junction of pathways and a crossing place to the south of the river, as well as a fishing spot and a vantage point. Those uses continued into early penal settlement, when the pathways were traversed by horses and carts, and the land became a burial ground near the jail and the barracks. The burial ground was established back in eighteen twenty-five, when the Moreton Bay Penal Settlement was relocated to Brisbane. There were approximately two hundred and twenty people buried there between eighteen twenty-five and eighteen forty-three, when the North Brisbane Burial Ground opened in Milton and the site was sold to raise funds for drainage facilities. The Halligan Spa Water Company Bottling Factory was established on the site in the eighteen nineties at the North Quay End. The company was formed to bottle and distribute water from natural springs in Halligan, and the site was chosen for its proximity to the Brisbane River, which allowed for ease of transportation and distribution. The International Harvester Company, which distributed agricultural machinery was, machinery, was established on the land between Saul, Roma and Skew Streets. Mister Edward "Escot" McCormick was the managing director of the company at the time, and evidence suggests that the park was named in his honour, because he urged council to acknowledge and commemorate the history of that site. Once council had acquired the two parcels, the site was amalgamated into a public park, featuring new planting, landscaping, seating, pavement and a mosaic tile pool with the large water sculpture. Madam Chair, there was much more that we learnt on the site, it was a fantastic presentation, and I leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Further speakers. No further speakers? We'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against no? The ayes have it, it is carried. Councillor Hutton, City Standards.
Thank you, Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh of May, twenty twenty-five be adopted.
Seconded.
Has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Adaman, that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting dated Tuesday, twenty-seven May, twenty twenty-five be adopted. Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair. Last week, our committee had an excellent presentation from our medical entomologist on our mosquito management programme. It is a critical area of service for Brisbane, directly impacting the comfort, safety and health of our residents across the city. Our mosquito programme is one of the largest and most sophisticated in Australia. It is actually the most sophisticated in Australia. It is recognised across the country as the best. Council mosquito management programme has five key objectives. It is to reduce the number of mosquitoes, prevent mosquito-borne diseases, monitor and control invasive mosquito species, respond to public inquiries and complaints, and of course, meet council's obligation under the Public Health Act. Mosquitoes can carry all sorts of diseases, like Ross River fever, bama, forest virus and dengue, and the one that most recently happened, Japanese encephalitis. Council takes the threat very seriously and invests heavily into early action. The aerial component of our programme only covers approximately eighteen hundred hectares of salt marsh habitat across the city. So far this season, we've conducted aerial treatments totaling more than fourteen thousand hectares. And, and these efforts have helped to maintain low salt marsh mosquito numbers despite the wet seasonal conditions. On the ground, council actively manages twenty-four hundred freshwater mosquito breeding sites. Officers are equipped with versatile fleet of four-wheel drives, electric buggies and a combination of six and eight-wheeled ATVs to cross even the most difficult terrain. I actually managed to go out and visit one of our officers undertaking this work, and they do a really exceptional, exceptional job, and they also have to tackle some tough terrain on foot. They, beyond the saltwater and freshwater mosquitoes, council also responds to exotic species like dengue and Asian tiger mosquitoes. These species are known as vectors of serious diseases and are particularly dangerous. Our teams are trained and equipped to provide rapid chemical response and undertake surveillance trapping. This work is done in conjunction with the federal and state governments to manage the mosquito species. It was fantastic, because during the presentation, Martin actually brought in one of the trapping pieces of equipment, and they put some dry ice, actually, at the top of the trap to attract the mosquitoes. They come in and, and they're captured at the bottom of the contraption. And it was on one of these cards that we sent to Queensland Health, that they were able to discover in January, that we actually had Japanese encephalitis. We were very fortunate, however, that the one case was only found in one trap, and we have not seen it since. So it is a fantastic result from that programme. Now, before I close, I do actually want to give a big shout-out to Martin and his team for the important work that they do. It is both, it is seen and unseen, but I do, I don't think that they seem to get the credit that they deserve for the hard work that they do in keeping pesky mosquitoes away from our residents. I also want to say a big, big thank you to the team who provide all the tools and technical support to these officers for them to be able to deliver the services they provide to our city. I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Further speakers. No further speakers. We'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against no? The ayes have it, it's carried. Councillor Howard, Community and the Arts Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Community and the Arts Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh of May, twenty twenty-five be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Howard and seconded by councillor Wolf, that the report of the Community and the Arts Committee meeting dated Tuesday, twenty-seven May, twenty twenty-five be adopted. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So before moving to the report, there are just a few items that I would like to share with the chamber. The first one is to add my huge thanks to River City Pride and Sarah Tell and her team for the Gold Award for AWEI. I know that they work incredibly hard to, to uphold all of the fantastic things that Brisbane City Council is renowned for, and they're a great bunch of people. We all got together for Ida Hobbit morning very early and to raise the flag, and, and I just know how much the support of this chamber and this council means to the team, and I just want to say a huge thank you. Sarah, please pass on our thanks to the whole team. I'd also like to mention that it is National Reconciliation Week, and I was privileged to represent the Lord Mayor last night at an award ceremony that was hosted by the Premier and Minister Simpson. And I, again, I want to say a huge thank you to all of the amazing people that work in this sector, and these were people who received awards from right across Queensland, and the work that is being done to improve our First Nations peoples and their ongoing commitment is, is nothing short of amazing, and the Premier and Minister Simpson were very supportive of the work that is being done in those areas. I also want to mention Mister Kevin Power, who after fifty years, that's five zero years, is leaving the Queensland Choir as their musical director. Now, the Queensland Choir has been going for a hundred and fifty-three years, which again is quite astounding, but Kevin has been there for fifty of those years, and there was an event on the weekend where we said farewell to Kevin. He's a, he's a very modest man, but we want to, I want to put on the record the thanks of all of Brisbane to the work that he has done and will continue to do, because I'm fairly sure that they won't be able to let him go. And finally, we had, it was Volunteer Week recently, and we had an event with our Brisbane Greeters. And as has become tradition, I am required to read a poem by Brisbane Greeter Gail, who writes one every year for the Greeters. Now, this year's poem spells out the word volunteer, so bear with me, I can't do it as well as Gail, but let me see what I can do. Qualities of a Brisbane Greeter Volunteer. V. Venture forth and be a greeter. O. Our optimism is through the roof. L. Laughter is our special feature. U. Upbeat, our popularity is living proof. N. Nothing ever seems to faze us. T. Tears of joy are what we shed. E. Every Greek continues to amaze us, another E, even when we shiver or sweat. R. Ready to give guests a day to remember. And S. Stepping out with a smile from January to December. I have now fulfilled my obligations, but can I just say, on behalf of the chamber, because I know that everyone here adores our Brisbane Greeters, they adore Brisbane, and the work they do is nothing short of brilliant, so we're, we're very happy to have them. Now, moving to the report, last week's committee presentation was the Braille Trail Awareness Campaign. And to date, council has invested nearly three hundred million dollars into making Brisbane more accessible and inclusive for those with mobility, hearing, sight and cognitive impairments. Approximately five hundred and seventy-five thousand Australians are vision impaired or blind, and more than sixty-six thousand people are completely blind and may experience barriers on a daily basis. Now, council has collaborated with leading organisations such as the Guide Dogs Queensland and Vision Australia to provide access to resources which significantly enhance the independence of people with vision impairments, and we were given examples of those projects. Council has also worked closely with disability advocate Jane Britt, who addressed council, to develop the campaign and ensure that it highlighted the key messages for the vision impaired community. And Madam Chair, council will continue to expand its inclusion strategy in the lead-up to Brisbane twenty thirty-two Olympic and Paralympic Games, with the expansion of accessible pathways between public transport and homes, and advocacy for accessible tourism experience, and I recommend the report to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Strong.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to speak on the presentation on the Braille Trail, and I was curious when, when it came through on the papers and what it was all about, and then we had a presentation, and for some of those maybe in the chamber, like myself, those metal tactile tiles, or whatever you want to call them, out there on the footpath, I thought were some sort of an industrial application to strengthen the footpath or something like that. I didn't know that they were actually used by people with white canes, right, to know where, where they are, and I believe the trail itself is about one point six kilometres long, which is quite, and I think we have the biggest trail in any city, certainly in Australia anyways. And I was also quite impressed, actually, when we were going off to dinner up at Brew, and I asked our newest councillor, Emily Kim, and, and our leader, councillor Cassidy, what these metal things were, I was just going to see if they knew, and they did, which, which I was quite impressed, actually, because I'm always impressed with people that know something that I don't know. Anyways, no, it's, it's, and I've seen, and now that I know what they are, I actually see people using them now, and, and they're not just walking, you know, on a footpath, they're actually using those for reference points. And I just thought it was a great presentation. The other thing I was interested in, of course, was the accessibility for people with mobility in, right around, right around, right across Brisbane, actually, that was part of that presentation as well. And I did raise the issue with the Forest Lake Stage, which is built thirty, well, not the stage, but the, the platform that the stage sits off of now, that was built about twenty-odd years ago, doesn't have any accessibility for people with wheelchairs and walkers, because it's all, the approaches are all stairs, right? And so I've, I'm going to make contact with this, with this unit within council to get them to come out and actually have a look, so that we can actually put it on for a future. It has actually been on the wish list for the Lord Mayor's budget for a number of years, but I want someone to actually see, instead of just reading about it, I want them to actually see the situation and how, how we can improve that accessibility for people with mobility issues right across, right across Brisbane, as well as at the Lake Stage. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers. Councillor Davis. Any, write a reply. We'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against no? The ayes have it. Deputy Mayor, Finance and City Governance Committee.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the twenty-seventh of May, twenty twenty-five be adopted.
Seconded.
Sorry. Do it with my speaker. Moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by councillor Wong, that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting dated Tuesday, the twenty-seventh of May, twenty twenty-five be adopted. Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'll speak just briefly. Our presentation last week was from our City Resilience Manager, who does an excellent job, and he provided an update on council's activities from the past severe weather season. Of course, it was an informative report, and I want to thank all the staff right across council for their efforts in reducing risk and promoting community prepar, excuse me, preparedness and resilience. As we know, the past season was a big one, starting off with the devastating microburst, which hit the eastern suburbs back on the sixteenth of January. Council successfully completed cleanup activities and received over two hundred and fifty requests for assistance following the event. The areas most impacted were Morningside, Doughboy, Holland Park. Doughboy, Holland Park, and Cooperu Wards. The committee also received an update on XTC Alfred and heard about our commitment to community preparedness throughout the entire year. Over the past year, council organised a series of local events for residents, including five bushfire preparedness sessions, three flood preparedness events, and two tailored sessions for vulnerable communities. Council is also making preparations for the 2025 Brisbane Emergency Services Expo, which will be held on the 11th of October this year, on the south side of Brisbane, at the Mount Gravatt Showgrounds. It was north side last year, south side this year. Throughout the year, multiple disaster management exercises will also be conducted to ensure our readiness for any scenario. In addition to this, council has enhanced public access to real time traffic information during emergencies as well. And I'll leave the debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Any further speakers? No further speakers. We'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. That is carried. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. I have a petition from residents calling on a council to deliver a bridge, an underbridge footpath connecting Ocaligan Park to Gibong Park.
Councillor Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a petition requesting council establish new fossicking general permission areas in Brisbane.
Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that the petitions, as presented, be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Second.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Strunk that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or councillor Ethics Committee order? We'll now move to general business. Are there any speakers? Please make sure, councillors, that you do define your topic of your speech at the beginning. Any speakers? Councillor Chongwa.
Thank you. I rise to speak on the Sorry Day breakfast that I attended on the 23rd of May. I attended the Sorry Day breakfast hosted by Auntie Patricia Thompson, CEO of Linkup at Cranbrook Place, a former Aboriginal girls' home at West End, which operated from 1900 to 1906 under Queensland's Aboriginal Protection Act. During this time, Aboriginal girls and young women were forcibly removed from their families, held in the home under harsh and humane conditions, while being trained to be domestic servants. Cranbrook Place site is a memorial to the stolen generation, to honour all that have been impacted. I couldn't help hold back my tears. I heard from Auntie Angelique as she told her story of struggle and loss. She spoke of her loss of identity and connection to her family and country. After many barriers and challenges, Linkup was able to assist her and her children in finding their long lost connections to their community and country. Tragically, she never got to meet her mother. This is truly heartbreaking. Despite the ongoing trauma and suffering that was inflicted on her, Auntie Angelique showed resilience, kindness, compassion, and love. She is an incredible soul. The depth of harm that our successive governments have imposed on First Nations people is unconscionable and immoral, and is still ongoing to this very day. The 23rd of May marks the 28th anniversary of the tabling of the Bringing Home Report in the Australian Parliament in 1997, and commemorates stolen generation survivors. They are Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children who were forcibly separated from their families in an attempt to assimilate them into white Australian culture during the 20th century. The Bringing Them Home Inquiry was a landmark truth telling process that highlighted the extent of Australians' stolen generation history, and sharing this with the nation. In 1997, the report made multiple recommendations, yet almost 30 years on, many crucial actions have not been implemented. Linkup Queensland is an extraordinary organisation that provides support to reunite First Nations people with their families and communities, where contact has been lost due to forced removal, fostering, adoption, and institutionalisation. There is no doubt how extremely valuable this work is in providing a sense of peace, identity to First Nations people. Thank you, Auntie Pat and Linkup team, for all your amazing work, compassion, care, research, and love. The serum was rich with love and culture of the First Nations people. We must continue to fight for truth telling and treaty, and end the oppression and ongoing harm that impacts our First Nations people. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Dixon.
Chair, I wish to rise on one item of business, Dancing CEOs 2025. So I've brought some show and tell today, but I'll get to that in a second. So thank you, councillor Givney. So last Saturday night, here at City Hall, was the Dancing CEOs 2025, which is more than just Brisbane answer to Dancing with the Stars. It is a testament to the power of community, leadership, and the unwavering belief that together we can make a difference for Women's Legal Service Queensland. So I thought I would bring in one of the participants' costumes to show you the effort that they put in for the show. So I'll just pop that there. And I'm sure that my colleagues, the Lord Mayor, Lady Mayor S, and councillor Penny Wolf, can attest to how good the talent was on Saturday night. The Shrinna Council has been supporters of Dancing CEOs for many years, and once again was a major supporter. It was incredible to see people put themselves out of their comfort zone to show courage and commitment for women across Queensland. This event shines a light on a dark aspect of our society, and it was fitting that the event was held at the end of May, which is Domestic and Family Violence Prevention Month. May this year also marks a milestone with coercive control becoming a crime here in Queensland. The night raised over $876,000, which goes towards a fund that will employ emerging lawyers in a graduate programme to provide free legal advice to women who are experiencing domestic and family violence. In fact, we have a couple of former Dancing CEOs in the Shrinna Council team, with Krista, councillor Adams, and councillor Wolf, who have previously swapped the boardroom for the dance floor in the 11 years it's been going. However, I want to pay tribute to a few Hamilton Ward locals who put their dancing shoes on, and in some cases, their wings for an incredible cause. It's not just one night of effort. All the CEOs have to put on their fundraising hats. And I just want to mention a couple of people, Joanne Fricker and Lauren Holland, who raised over $230,000, taking up the running up prize for their efforts. So well done. They organised the inaugural Diamond Day Out at the Iconix and Augustin's Church lawn. They held raffles and rattled the tin with their friends and family, all while putting the effort to practise their dancing weekly, and their costumes, as you can see here behind me, and running their very successful businesses. Well done, ladies. Very, very proud. So I'd also like to mention Tilly Conniess and Nicole Perez, who were also very successful Dancing CEOs, who put on their dancing shoes and blew us away with their performances on the night, as well as the other 12 Dancing CEOs who participated from places such as even the Whit Sunday. The Hamilton Ward community has a big heart, and it certainly shone through on Saturday night. This year's event was particularly special, as it marks the 41th anniversary of Women's Legal Service Queensland, a milestone that underscores decades of dedication to supporting women and children impacted by domestic and family violence. Funds raised through this initiative are instrumental in expanding their capacity to provide free legal advice, court representation, and safety planning. Sadly, while the service reaches over 14,000 women a year, many calls that are answered, there are many more calls that go unanswered as the demand increases. That's why these funds are important, and we continue to shine a light on domestic and family violence. The impact of Dancing CEOs extends beyond the event itself. These grassroots efforts not only raised funds, but they also sparked conversations about domestic violence and the importance of support services like Women's Legal Service Queensland. Dancing CEOs leaves a legacy too, with previous CEOs continuing their efforts through initiatives such as labels on the lawn, where my shoes are from today, and also those that have been going for many years, organised by Maria Vecchio, and Hamilton Ward locals Brendan and Brendan, who organised the yearly epic walk for DV. The walk and the labels event serve as a reminder that every step taken is a step forward towards a safer future for women and children. As we reflect on the success of Dancing CEOs 2025, let us remember that the fund raised are not just numbers, they represent real lives transformed. They scrutinify women who can now access the legal support they desperately need, children who can grow up in safer environments, and communities that are empowered to stand against domestic violence. They offer so much more than legal advice. They have social workers, a financial abuse prevention unit. And I encourage you, through you, Chair, if councillors have an opportunity to visit their centre, please do, and see firsthand the life changing work they do. I extend my heartfelt gratitude to all the CEOs, past and present, volunteers, sponsors, and attendees who made this event possible, especially to Nadia Bromley, who's their CEO, and Nat Davidson from Women's Legal Service Queensland, and their wider team whose passion for helping women shines through every day. Together, we are not just raising funds, we are raising hope, dignity, and the promise of a brighter future for all. This service could save the life of your daughter, your mother, or the woman that you pass on the street. Chair, I will conclude my remarks there. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on two events, one past, one future. The Hakka Multicultural Festival that took place on Sunday, and the upcoming Queensland, the local Queensland Day Awards in my ward, Queensland Day Awards in my ward. We'll start with the Hakka Multicultural Festival that took place on Sunday. It was well attended. This was the second year that we weren't able to use, we weren't able to have the races in the lake because of the water quality. But that didn't stop the president of the Hakka Association and the two, two people that actually support him very well, Tony and of course Jackie, and Florence, who are, both Jackie and Florence have been with the association for, probably from the start, but at least, at least the start of them coming into the ward some 14 years ago to hold the multicultural festival and the dragon boat races. I just want to pay tribute to their commitment over those many years. We had a good turnout of all levels of government. We had Milton Dick, the Speaker of the House. We had Jules Campbell, who's the new member for Morton, and she actually comes from Hakka, right, through her mother's lineage. We also, of course, had Markie Nightingale, the local member for Anala there, state member for Anala, and of course, a good sprinkling of councillors, including the Lord Mayor and the Lady Mayor S as well. So that was very much appreciated by the organising committee that that support is shown to them. It was, again, it was the second year without the races, but honestly, there was at least a couple of thousand people there still, looking at the parking on the streets. The streets are pretty well parked out, actually, the ones that I saw anyways. And so that was really good. In regards to the local Queensland Day Awards, they're coming up on Saturday. This is the 20th year that we've actually held them locally. It kicked off with Henry Palache all those years ago. To recognise those local community members and leaders, right, who do an unbelievable job, better job than, well, I won't say a better job than government, but they probably do, better job than government. They work with no money, usually, right, and they work long hours for very little thanks, right? And so this is a small way that we can actually recognise those, and to say we've done hundreds over the years. And if I sat down and made out another list of the ones that we actually haven't recognised yet, there would be many hundreds as well. So it's, we're really fortunate to have those people in our community, those community leaders who do that work that government doesn't do, whether it be churches or schools in some cases, because of course, there's PNC presidents and others that support their schools in the area as well, and all those other NGOs that actually go beyond what they get actually paid for. They do a lot of extra hours, and they're recognised as well from time to time as well. We also do a lot with the school leadership teams, the secondary leadership teams. We've got three in the area. And so we recognise their commitment and the work that they do during their leadership undertaking, whether it's for one year, two years, or three years, or sometimes, but maybe even four years. Sometimes they are part of a leadership team within the school. So I'll finish my comments there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on two items in general business. One, the minimum wage increase we've seen today in the second Sorry Day. I'd like to congratulate the 3 million workers and their unions on securing a 3.5% increase to the national minimum wage today. It's still refreshing to know that we have a government in Canberra, a Labor government in Canberra, that actually has the backs of workers, unlike the previous LNP government who fought against workers every step of the way. We saw just recently, Peter Dutton wanted to sack 41,000 public servants down, not just down in Canberra, but right around the country. And we've seen Brisbane's own version of Peter Dutton, Adrian Shrinna, our Conservative LNP Lord Mayor, sacked 550 council staff over the last two years, and along with his LNP colleagues, fought against a decent wage increase here in council every step of the way. So contrary to what the Lord Mayor likes to occasionally say about him being a teal, or the original teal, sometimes he likes to say, he is exactly, exactly the same as any other anti-worker LNP politician in Australia. It is no wonder we have discovered over the last couple of weeks that the Lord Mayor promotes LNP donors a lot more than he does council workers. Says a lot about the kind of politician he is. The second thing I'd like to talk about is National Sorry Day, and particularly the ceremony held at Kalinga Park last Friday. For the first time in 27 years of that event occurring in that park, there were flagpoles there, and they were very appreciative to councillor Dixon for securing those flagpoles. I think the concrete looked still a little wet, but the flags went up nonetheless. And the Nungar Reconciliation Group was very appreciative of that, councillor Dixon, through you, Chair. This commemoration dates back to 1998, a year after the Bringing Them Home Report was brought down and released, detailing Australia's history of forcibly removing Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children from their parents and families in an effort to remove Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander culture from Australia entirely. And the sites that we commemorate at each year, and Kalinga Park is one that I was at, are chosen because they sit close to institutions of which Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children were forcibly removed from their families too. And at Kalinga Park, it's important because it's close by to institutions that dated from 1897 to 1970, including St Vincent's Home, Nudgy Diamond Tina Orphanage, Magdalen Asylum, and Holy Cross Industrial School for Girls at Wooloween, and Tufnell Girls' Home and Tufnell Industrial School at Nunndah. A lot of places that children were taken from their families to assimilate to a white Australia. We saw their students from schools right across the north side attend and also participate as well. And Uncle Alex Davidson gave the Welcome to Country, and also was the keynote speaker. And he spoke about his time at Sherberg, where he was sent with his mother and siblings. And his time there was marked by great friendships formed and close bonds with other people who were taken there, but also suffering. And he spoke about the times that he tried to break out, the times that he was locked in solitary confinement. And he got his records much later in life, and he accessed those records. And he noted the word absconded was on there quite a bit. And he said he remarked that he later figured out what absconded meant, and it was escape. And he said it was like a jail, being there, being taken there, and being locked in that place. And those official records corroborated that. Auntie Ruth Hegarty was there again, I think probably for the 27th year running as the Nungar, as the patron of the Nungar Reconciliation Group. She's now 95 years old and still going strong. And I asked her how she was and how her health was, and she said it was fine, thanks very much, and that she is writing three more books. And she has a project of which she wants to work with, and we're going to support her in, in trying to establish a hostel for Aboriginal Torres Strait Island people on the north side of Brisbane, so they don't lose, continue to lose connection, particularly someone like her who was taken as a child and taken to a dormitory. So her resilience and determination, almost a century after she was taken from her family, is an inspiration to all of us.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Further speakers? Thank you councillor Cassidy. Further speakers. Councillor Davis.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I rise to speak about a Sorry Day ceremony that I attended at Terre Robert Park in my ward. And I acknowledge everything that councillor Cassidy just spoke of then. And I know that councillor Cassidy has attended the Sorry Day service that's held at Terre Robert Park on occasion. And it's always a very moving, very moving morning. And each year, the numbers of people that come along to participate in the event grows every year. And it's particularly heartening to see how many young people come along to understand the challenges of the past, that we never repeat those terrible practices and policies of the past and pay, and reflect on the Coming from Home report each year. It's a wonderful group and it's led by Auntie Flo Watson, who is an absolute stalwart. She's been on the committee for, for decades now and continues to, to lead the way. We have a wonderful community on the north side of Brisbane, all the way from my ward through to councillor Cassidy's ward, very strong Aboriginal community. And it's always a great pleasure to be able to come along and support them on this very important day. I had the very great pleasure this year of reading the pledge as part of the proceedings. And I said to Auntie Flo after that, that it was a very moving experience for me and I hope to have another opportunity in the future to participate in that sort of way. So congratulations to the Terre Robert Park's Northern Generations Support Group. They do a wonderful job. It was a wonderful ceremony and one that we should always try to attend if we have the opportunity. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Griffiths.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I rise to talk about the upcoming bus changes. I call them the delusional bus changes that has been, routes implemented by this, this administration. It was interesting. I, I was one of those people, had a briefing during the week. And I thanked those officers for that briefing. The, the part of the information that I could glean was truthful, was good. But there was a whole lot that you had to sift through to find out what the truth was. It was a bit like when they restructured PPI or City Standards. I had a couple of smiling faced people bounce into my office and they're all sunshine and lollipops. And then we've gone through the greatest debacle ever that I've seen in council in regards to a restructure with the performance of city standards and PPI and been a debacle. So I suspect I'm on the verge of another debacle, given that the way this presentation was done is this is just the best thing, this is just the best thing to happen to Brisbane. And I don't believe it is. So what I was able to glean from asking questions and finding out the truth is that there'll be multiple bus stops cut. Now, I believe that number to be 60 to 80. I believe that number to be 60 to 80. The officers wouldn't tell me. Despite us, pre-asking that question, the officers wouldn't tell me. Is that the sort of briefing you expect from a professional, neutral government organisation who are doing their jobs? So I'm waiting for the information. We've asked the Lord Mayor for information. The chairperson won't release that information. So I think the residents of Brisbane have a right to that information. I have suburbs, a number of suburbs losing services. So Rockleigh, Caishere, Archfield, Oxley, they're actually losing a lot of services. We have got rid of after 20 years, 22 years of me being in this council, another thing the Liberals quietly get rid of, is anything to do with the word service. So we used to have a service obligation that we would guarantee a bus stop within 400 metres of people's homes. We've got rid of that. It's gone. The Liberals have taken over the administration. Anything to do with service has gone. Just like we've got rid of printing bus timetables now. Because everyone we know is on social media and everyone uses an iPhone. Not. So a third of my ward don't have access to technology. They pay their rates, they don't have access to technology. In fact, the, the advice I got with Rockleigh is, yeah, we're cutting the bus services there because they have a train station. But are there the footpaths, the accessible footpaths to get to the train station? Well councillor, that's not our problem, that's your problem. You get a bucket of money to fund that. Oh, but I have a list of 100, 100 footpaths waiting to be built. Well councillor, that's your problem, not our problem. And in relation to footpaths, whether it's hit the LNP or not, I've said it for the last few weeks, it is, I am doing two accessible footpaths that are now costing me $80,000 just to design them. Not to build them, just to design them. That's a year, sorry. And we're not, we still have, I still got a kid in a wheelchair trying to get to school and we still can't build a footpath for them. But we can send a councillor to Paris to have a lovely time talking about people with disabilities. Now, I understand that there are major changes also impacting Holland Park Ward. Heard nothing about that from that councillor. And Greenslips Ward, silence too. Too busy sending instructions to everyone in the chamber about how to respond to us. I am really concerned about these changes. They are coming through my office and smashing my office now. And it hasn't even started. And I'm even more concerned that there are councillors here who actually think, LNP councillors here, who think that business class or Qantas Club membership is, is public transport. They actually think that is public transport and our buses aren't public transport. And I'd really like to see you being in administration for 22 long years. And the services to residents have just got worse and worse. But this is going to be a nightmare coming for residents with these changes.
Councillor Griffiths, your time has expired. Any further speakers? Councillor Cunningham.
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on matters this evening relating to travel. Disappointing to hear the commentary, the sad commentary, Madam Chair, from the opposition councillors today. Because what we don't hear those opposite commenting on is the travel habits of the former state Labor government, which we all know shocked Queenslanders. You see, you might remember that Stephen Miles slugged taxpayers $167,000 for two private jets for a series of press conferences. Nearly $170,000 on flights alone. You may, you may also think, how on earth could you spend this amount of money and not even leave the state? Well, Labor can, despite what...
One moment please councillor. Councillor Strunk, during your general business, you were not interrupted. It's very disrespectful. All councillors be quiet so I can hear everything councillor Cunningham has to say.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Because despite what the opposition would have the people of Brisbane believe, all costs associated with the mission for me as deputy mayor, including travel and accommodation, were covered by the business mission delegates, not ratepayers. Not one single dollar of ratepayers' funds went to that trip. But what has councillor Cassidy had to say about international travel in the past? Well, here we go. This is exactly what he said. Quote, "It's essential that Brisbane is positioned strongly on the global stage. We recognise that partnerships do achieve that. We think we should leverage them as much as possible to continue to see Brisbane grow on the global stage." And I end quote. So Madam Chair, I'm not just going to cop this ongoing bullying from the male members of the Labor Party. It absolutely has to stop. We are an open and transparent council. All of our overseas expenses are published on the website and in the annual report. Now, to the final two days of the business mission. The, the last two days, Madam Chair, with the delegates were spent at World Expo at Osaka. A number of briefings were conducted with representatives of multiple nations, including the United Arab Emirates, the United States, the United Kingdom, the Netherlands, Colombia, Canada, and of course, our own Australian consulate general in Osaka. Finally, on our way home, the delegates had one last site meeting at the Cairnsay International Airport, which has recently undergone a major redevelopment and transformation. I want to take this opportunity to sincerely thank Nicole Garth, Sarah and the whole international relations and multicultural affairs team who work every day to ensure that Brisbane is recognised as a truly global city. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on international travel by, sorry, what? International travel by the LNP councillors. It used to be that there was transparency in the way in which international travel was approved when I started in this chamber, even up until maybe five years ago. All international travel came up to full council and there was public disclosure of that travel and approval by full council. Now, in secret, the LNP administration and the former CEO changed the policy. So the people who approve the international travel are the people, not unsurprisingly, who go on the international travel, and that is the LNP councillors. Now, I don't know what the number is up to, but last year, the number with respect to travel was $350,000. There was junkets left, right and centre. The deputy mayor had popped off to Paris for two weeks at the most expensive hotel you could stay at and then stepped down as deputy mayor and announced she wasn't running just a couple of months later. Now, does anybody think that the $26, $30,000 that were spent on her trip is a good investment by ratepayers of this city? No, they, no, I don't. And I'm pretty sure you ask any single person out there with a broken footpath, a road full of potholes, trees down from a storm three months ago, that aren't being picked up, congested and unsafe roads where council doesn't have any money to do those roadworks. All of those things, all of those things aren't being funded. But this LNP administration is choosing to fund junkets for itself overseas. Now, the indignation of the deputy mayor, who has stood up for four weeks in a row and boasted about her trip to Japan, sending Brisbane residents postcards from Japan when she is not doing her job as the deputy mayor. She is not ensuring that the storm clean-up is undertaken in the city. And the deputy mayor is the person responsible for storm recovery and resilience in this city. But the deputy mayor thinks it's much more important for her to spend four weeks talking about a junket to Japan with a bunch of her businessmates who are probably all donors to the LNP. And I reckon if we got a list of who they were, which she has not published, if we got a list of them, you'd find half of them are donors to the LNP. Now, if I'm wrong, I hope that the deputy mayor will stand up and publish a list of all the people who went with her. Because we've seen these previous junkets, they're all made up of LNP mates, all of them. So does anybody think that the person responsible in this city for storm recovery and resilience should be boasting about a trip to Japan for four weeks in a row? Instead of explaining to the people in my ward or any other ward in this city why their parks haven't been cleaned up, why the potholes haven't been filled, why $500 million was cut out of the budget? These are the things that the deputy mayor is actually responsible for, not jet setting about on business class travel to Japan with her LNP mates. And for sure, that's who it'll be with. Now, the deputy mayor stands up and says, I'm being bullied. Oh, well, I think the deputy mayor needs to have a really good, hard look at her priorities. It's a word the LNP likes to use when they talk about how funding and projects are allocated in this city. And if you ask any single person in this city whether the right priority is LNP councillors, including the Lord Mayor, including the deputy mayor, including multiple chairs, going on junkets overseas instead of doing their job in the city, they will say no. They will say no. They're not coming in here talking about the bridge until motions are moved and their, and their inaction has been exposed. They're off talking about junkets overseas. Now, the deputy mayor is going to say, oh, she's been very mean to me. Well, I would just say to everybody listening, the wrong priorities are being demonstrated by this LNP administration when they prioritise overseas travel like the Lord Mayor is doing, along with senior council officers. He's often a junket to New York for, we don't know what purpose.
Councillor Johnson, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers?
It's a wrong priority.
No further speakers. We'll now move to notified motion. Councillors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion, item 8A on the agenda. Councillor Griffiths, would you please move the motion?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. The council requests the suburban, so the council requests the suburban works programme is included as a formal part of the 2025-2026 budget, not as supporting information, including dollar figures for all projects and all program areas within the budget, including dollar figures associated, allocated to works.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Griffiths, seconded by councillor Cassidy that this council requests the suburban works programme is included as a formal part of the 2025-2026 budget, not as supporting information, including dollar figures for all projects and all program areas within the budget, including dollar figures allocated to works. Is there any debate?
Absolutely. I've done this and this motion has been supported by councillor Jared Cassidy for, for a very important reason. And that is that the last time the budget was handed down, it was handed down without figures in it. It was handed down without figures allocated to projects that we're undertaking. Now, I've been here since 2003 and these are the budgets. These are all the budgets that have been handed down during that time. And what's the difference between these budgets and what we got handed down last year? There's no figures in the budget for last year. Zero figures. It's like a mystery. It's like a game, an LNP game. Choose your own adventure. It's like sneaky snakes and ladders. Everything in this, everything in this council is hidden. It's deceptive. We play games and we, the administration hides it. We don't release reports like the Story Bridge report. We just won't release it. Oh, it's too hard. We can't do that. Oh, we can't give you the number of bus stops that are going. Oh, we can't give you the number of trees we're not planting. Oh, we can't give you anything. Oh, and here's my postcard from Japan. It was a lovely trip funded by ratepayers. Or I took time off while I should actually have been dealing with ratepayers. Or I'm on an overseas junket to, to New York to meet Trump. I don't know. There seems to be any number of things happening in this administration that these people think are okay. I talk to residents. I'm not all funding overseas junket. I meet residents. And what residents tell me is they want better services. And they want better buses. And they want their roads fixed. And they think paying a toll for the Story Bridge just shows how inept this mayor and this LNP council is. And they don't want Centenary Pool shut down. Oh, and they think selling Victoria Park off is a con job. And they want to keep the Gabba. That's what I hear from residents. Do I hear it from anyone on that side of the chamber? No, nothing. You know, crickets. What we want and what we think is reasonable and democratic and, and has been good enough for the last 22 years is that you include budget items and budget figures in a budget book. What a novel, what a... What a novel, what a, what a novel concept. You actually deliver a budget book that has budget figures in it and we can see how the money is being spent. So it isn't sort of a, two weeks before the end of financial year and councillor Hutton suddenly miraculously getting $2.8 million spent on her park that wasn't listed in a budget book. Wow, incredible, unbelievable, unbelievable. Anyone who believed in any way in democracy would say that what we're asking for is not unreasonable. Anyone out there in public land would say what we're asking for is not unbelievable. And what you're delivering now with delivering books that have no figures in it is an insult not only to us, it's an insult to you and the council officers. Because it means you have so much to hide and you are so dubious and you are so secretive that the organisation can't stand robust debate. And the organisation and you can't stand scrutiny. And that's a really bad thing for our city. It's a bad, bad thing for any democracy. So it's simple, we're a few weeks out from the budget being delivered. We are asking for no secret games. We're not asking for, for, "Oh, well, let's try this strategy." "Let's keep, let's not put figures in the book." "Oh, they're, we're so smart, God, we're intelligent, we've got a majority, God." "We are just so good, we're holding on to power because we're deceiving people, we're being undemocratic, you know, God, we're good." I can just see, I can just see the deputy mayor there going, "Oh, we'll fix them." We won't give them any figures. Well, what we're asking for is figures and projects.
Councillor Griffiths, your time has expired. Are there further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to support this motion and thank councillor Griffiths and councillor Cassidy for bringing it forward. Last year I was genuinely shocked to see the failure of accountability and transparency that was exercised by councillor Cunningham, the finance chair, now deputy mayor. I have been a councillor for 17 years and the budget book has changed over that time to the detriment of transparency and accountability. But to remove all the figures apart from divisional information is one of the most shockingly neglectful and incompetent things that this administration has ever done. Now, the deputy mayor and the finance chair has spent four weeks talking about her junket to Japan in this place but cannot produce a budget book with figures in it, an area for which she is personally and directly responsible as the finance chair of Brisbane City Council. So ask yourself, anybody listening out there today, what do we think this administration's priorities are? Fairness, transparency and accountability in allocating ratepayers' funding and a budget of up to $4 billion? No, it's chatting about their lovely overseas trip to Japan. That is what our finance chairman thinks is more important than disclosing figures as part of this budget. Now, councillor Hutton has been interjecting the whole way through saying, "Oh, it's in the budget, her money, $2.8 million for the, sorry, Rocks Riverside is in the budget." Well, I've got it here, guess what? Not listed, not listed. I can tell you now that there are things listed in here which I'd forgotten about. Memorials and heritage assets. I'm supposed to have money for the Yorong Memorial Park, which has carried over from the 23-24 budget, which has been carried over to the 24-25 budget, which hasn't been delivered. I suspect it'll now be cut after three years. Metropolitan and district parks, here are the projects that are listed. Fallon Park, Evident Park, Glendorman Park, Holland Park West, Planning and Design various, and continuing the Winham Wading Pool. No Rocks Riverside Park mentioned in there either. And there's no Rocks Riverside Park mentioned in this budget book in any of the other budget playgrounds, any other playgrounds that are listed. And that's on the council website. The failure of this administration to include numbers in the budget turns it into a giant slush fund that they use at their own discretion to pork barrel in LNP wards, which is just appalling behaviour. We see that they're not even that wise in how they spend that money in their own wards because they can't even manage to look after key assets like the Story Bridge. We have to drag it out of them, that funding has failed. And I've stood up in here year after year and criticised the failure of this administration to properly scope projects, which is the biggest problem and has been since day dot, when the Lord Mayor wanted to put broadband through the sewerage pipes. That this administration fails, fails to scope projects properly. And that is a lack of leadership in announcing projects, which are announced first and proved up on the back of an envelope later. Meanwhile, the hard work of running the finances of this city isn't happening because as we've heard from the finance chairperson for four weeks in a row, she's been more interested in talking about her trip to Japan and how fabulous it was to go and talk to some businesspeople at an airport. Meanwhile, $500 million in funding just got cut out of the council budget last week because the finance chairperson cannot, cannot account for the delivery of funding as announced just a few months earlier by her Lord Mayor who sits right next to her. This is gross incompetence by the LNP. This is fundamental priority failure by the LNP. When you're more interested in talking about your junkets than talking about the finances of this city and the allocation of ratepayers' money, it's not councillor Cunningham's money, it's ratepayers' money and they're not getting a good deal for this. It is a failure of the LNP administration that they want to hide how they're spending money. They want to hide their failures in scoping projects, providing funding that is accountable.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Chongwa.
Thank you, Chair. I also rise to support this motion. Thank you councillor Griffiths and councillor Cassidy for moving this motion. As a newly elected councillor in March last year, I was shocked when we received this budget book with only top-line figures and no allocated budget. And for a new councillor, that's pretty tough. I was sent on an investigation journey. And even then, I was talking to my residents and they were asking questions. I'm saying, "There is no figures in this budget book." This is a total abuse of power. It lacks transparency and accountability and it is a failure to the LNP administration. And a failure, it is awful for our community to, as a rates payers, to have this happen. It's disgusting, it's gross. So I do hope.
One of order.
Sorry for interrupting. Did you just notice councillor Murphy was interrupting and calling out?
Councillor Griffiths, that is not happening. There are some very quiet conversations maybe happening over here, but no one's calling out.
Maybe laughing.
And, I mean, really, when you look at the books that are laid out here, it is actually possible to put figures in a budget book. It's actually possible. So let's be revolutionary and actually put numbers in a budget book. Honestly, please, like, for me as a new councillor is like, honestly, a guessing game. And honestly, it's disgusting that I have to go to my community and say, "Hey, I don't know, I've got to investigate, I've got to ask questions in the budget where we can try and work out what's going on." So as a new councillor, I'm saying to you now, it was not good for me to be experiencing such a ridiculous process of no budget, no figures in a budget. It's actually unbelievable, to be honest, I cannot believe it. It's actually Trumpian, I would say, that you are hiding your, whatever you're doing over there. It's disgusting. And that's all I have to say, thank you so much.
Further speakers? Councillor Strong.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Listen, I too was shocked at the fact that the scheduled figures, right, were not in the budget papers. Because I like to go through them and just see what my ward is getting out of the budget. And we were able to actually, for year after year, well, since I first came to council in 2016, we were able to actually let the residents know how much we were getting out of the budget, right, for the ward. In some years, we got $10 million returned to us. Some years, we got $6 million or thereabouts. But it was always interesting to know. And we were able to break it down as to what money we were getting for parks and road resurfacing and all those, all those other schedules. But to take them out is, I just thought, well, why are you doing that? And then, of course, you know, the penny drops, you know. They don't want us to be able to do that anymore because it can be a bit embarrassing. I remember the McDowell Ward, we looked at one year and the money out of the schedules returned was about $4 million, which was really, it was the lowest across all of the wards. Because I used to dissect all the wards, my team and I used to sit down and dissect and see who was getting what, right? And McDowell Ward, and of course, that was probably, for that particular council at the time, that was probably a bit embarrassing, right? That he wasn't getting, what his residents would think was not really a good return on their rates. Sorry? Well, I'll take that interjection from the councillor for Tennyson, who is usually on the bottom of the, of the, of the, of the return on the schedules, except for one year. You did, you did do well one year, one year, one year. Anyways, it was always interesting to do that, it was a good exercise. And it also helped, it also actually helped me work out on those requests that we sent through to the Lord Mayor for the budget, what, maybe what he, what he's been, what he's looking for. And so maybe we're able to, you know, put a few more of road resurfacing or some other stuff as well. So it was helpful, right? But, you know, you took that away. And then pretty much all the, other than the divisional stuff, as you said, councillor, councillor Johnston, through your chair, there's really just nothing there. It's just all text, right? And it's all, yeah, we're funding this, but, you know, to what, to what, to what level? Who knows? And so it's, of course, you know, and the fees and charges, well, they're still there at least. You know, I suppose the fees and charges, they're still there. And that's always an interesting one to go through as well, of course. Just to see what's, what's going up, what's going down or what's going out or what's coming in. That's always an interesting one as well. So my team and I go through that line by line. And we've become really good at it, right? So I just thank my team that does that. Jenny, last year, it was her first year, and she really liked that exercise because it was, she felt it was something important to know because they had all gone up about 10%. So, you know, at least they're there, at least they're there, but nothing else is there, right? And then I think I heard the excuse is the reason why they're not going to put those figures in anymore is because we have a Q and A, you know, we can, we can ask questions. But it's not like normal estimates in Parliament, of course. There you can't get out of not answering, right? Here, they get out of not answering any time on anything. And of course, even the length of estimates is much longer. And I've sat in, I have sat into state Parliament estimates committees and I'll tell you what, they take no prisoners. They take no prisoners. And so I just think, I thank councillor Griffiths and Cassidy for bringing this motion to the chamber because I think it needs to, I think the general public or for those who are watching needs to, needs to understand what used to be and what is now. And I tell you what, it's really, it's pretty sad. It's pretty sad that those, that those figures that used to be in the budget, so that, you know, the general public could go online and have a look after a few days and just see what they're getting for their, for their area, right?
Councillor Strong, your time has expired.
Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on this motion. And it's pretty simple, it's, you know, we understand we can't make this happen because the Lord Mayor has the sole responsibility under the City of Brisbane Act to deliver a budget and determine what's in that budget book for us to debate and ultimately pass as a council collectively here. And so this is a pretty straightforward motion that we'll all be voting on tonight to request that the Lord Mayor includes figures in his budget book. So the decision to remove those figures is an LNP regime decision. And it smacks of that, doesn't it? The limiting of available information to your political opponents as well as the general public tightens the control that members of the regime have. And that's what we have before us today. This slippery slope we've got here in council under the LNP away from an accountable and transparent organisation has been really speeding up over the last few years. And, you know, we sort of, in thinking about bringing this motion, think, well, what else could they remove in the, in the budget as well? Because if the Lord Mayor can make a unilateral decision, and I guess he might have talked to his LNP colleagues in civic cabinet about this ahead of the last budget, but he could have just made it on his own as well, I guess, to remove all of that information, to limit the ability for councillors to do their job, to know what they are voting on, to know whether projects are going to proceed or not in the budget. And we've heard a bit today, I think it was councillor Davis said that we're info sessions last year, therefore we could have asked about that. I think non-administration councils got about nine questions over the two-hour period because there's all these, these pre-written questions. These Dorothy Dixon questions that are handed out to LNP councillors in info sessions. We've seen the sheets of paper that they hand around. They're stapled and they all have their names alongside them. And sometimes they sort of forget to ask their question or ask the same one again. It's a bit embarrassing sometimes. What I've also discovered is that, so those, those questions are pre-prepared, but also, I mean, it's evident to see that the answers are all pre-prepared because the chairs sort of feign some, some show of trying to find what they're looking for. But we know that there's a page number written down in that folder and they open it up. And those questions are pre-prepared by council officers for chairs to go in and answer pre-prepared questions of LNP councillors to fill out time. So when we see this creeping politicisation of the public service here in Brisbane and we see what we suspect is some illegal direction being given, and don't worry, we are investigating that and if we do find it, we'll be referring it to the CCC. When we see this increasingly happen, that not the council officers want to play in this space at all, but they are being pressured by LNP politicians to do their bidding, we see worse outcomes. And we've seen that over the last two years. We've seen $400 million cut from the 23-24 budget on what was announced. No real detail had to come through this place to do that because the LNP can largely unilaterally do that. We saw two weeks ago, was it last week? Last week, $470 million in cuts. But where do you find that? Where do you find where was that $470 million itemised in the 24-25 budget? You can't. It doesn't exist. There is a list of projects in the back of the budget, which is now called supporting information, not formally part of the budget, which is labelled the Suburban Works Programme. But there's no accountability as to whether those projects proceed or not because they don't form part of the budget. So when the Lord Mayor announces $470 million worth of cuts, he of course doesn't have to list the projects that are being cut and delayed because by design, he ensured they weren't in the budget in the first place. So this is, this is like sneaky sinister behaviour from a political regime that's been in power for far, far too long. And when we have, I take councillor Johnston's point, have to get up and hear these lectures from councillor Cunningham time and again about the budget in the last four weeks, hear the travels from Japan and talking about a, an airport in Japan when we've got people. when we've got people trying to cycle to work at the Brisbane Airport. And for 10 years, the LNP haven't been able to connect a bike way there, and that's no longer even listed in the budget. Something has seriously gone wrong, and this is all about accountability and transparency.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. Any further speakers? Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. To summarise what everyone was saying for the past 10 minutes or so, essentially, when a group of people, a small group of people, and in this case, the exclusive LNP council, want to hide information to the rest of society, and in this case, all ratepayers alongside all other councillors that were also democratically elected, you know they have something to hide. Because if the LNP really believed that what they were advocating for was for the best of Brisbane ratepayers, they would show them in the numbers in this book. Clearly, something has gone drastically wrong in the past year for them to have that one-off year, the anomaly, where they had to hide these figures. And if that happens again, this budget sitting, we know that something's desperately wrong. And at times like this, in government, when we look back in history, you know that the truth will prevail. And if it doesn't, you know eventually, the LNP council will be held accountable by all the ratepayers of Brisbane, and the truth will finally come clean. And we will constantly be making sure that we're on the right side of history. We hope that this budget sitting will be much more effective and productive. I'm sure everyone would love to walk away from budget sitting, knowing that their time was spent well. If not, we would love to be in our communities, making sure that we're out there, listening to our residents. So last year, honestly, just felt like I was, every day was an episode of Parks and Rec. You know, you're sitting here in the chamber and then for two hours, we're asking in the Suburban Works Programme, could you please tell me the figures for X topic? And then you're sitting there for 10 minutes, listening to a bunch of six figures about 20 times. And we're spending two hours writing numbers down, about 20 to 50 different numbers. And that's what budget sitting is. And I just walked away from that just floored because I thought, jeez, is this what happens when you get elected to council? You fight for the community. You come here to try and advocate for improvements in your area, then you sit in budget sitting and then sit there for two hours just writing scribbling little digits down because it wasn't already provided to you in advance in a book, which would provide for much more robust debate during budget sitting. I really hope that for the sake of a more effective Brisbane, we can get moving and get ahead with making sure that these big projects are being debated properly and efficiently. We were all elected here democratically as well. I really believe that this LNP council has something to hide. If not, then why is the power being kept within a small group of people? It's clearly a political tactic when you keep other people in the dark, and it's wrong. And it should be on the record. And more ratepayers of Brisbane should know this because ultimately, the finance chair and everyone on this side of the chamber is responsible for a large portion of this city's budget. When I was elected, we had a lot of people walking into our office saying, gee, I didn't know this was how the budget was working. Thank you, how did you find out this information? Thank you for writing about it in your newsletters. Thank you for writing about what you're learning because with the community, we're learning together after 16 years of being kept in the dark by this LNP council and the former councillor. People are looking for change, and in today's times and in politics, I think it's really disappointing that people are feeling jaded and don't trust local politicians anymore. It's such a shame and it shouldn't be like that because politicians should be all about being a community advocate. No one should be different to each other. And I think this is such a bad example of how a transparent budget should work. Really, the LNP council should know better than that. So we're hoping and looking forward to a more productive budget sitting and hopefully less parks and recreation.
Point of order, Chair? Point of order, councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for dinner break for one hour, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded.
Has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Adaman, that council adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. The meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber. Further speakers? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on this motion. Madam Chair, I find it quite fascinating that this motion has been moved by the longest-serving councillor on the opposition bench and seconded by the opposition leader, who is supposed to be the most senior member of their team and supported by the independent councillor who spoke of her 17 years of experiences. To me, this just highlights the laziness and incompetence of those who sit opposite. Madam Chair, councillor Griffiths displayed a stack of past budget books, which immediately reminded me of former Labour treasurer Cameron Dick, who was often seen holding a booklet with only a cover page and there's no content in it. I've served in this place for 14 years, probably not as long as councillor Griffiths and councillor Johnston, but I've always taken the budget process seriously. Since 2011, I've made the point of reading through the budget documents in detail. And let me quote from the first budget I participated, the 2011-2012 council budget. At the bottom of the schedule page, it clearly states, "The proposed amount allocated to individual items within the schedule projects represents an indicative estimate. The estimate is provided for information purposes." So this is, has always been the estimate, nothing more. Councillor Griffiths and councillors opposite, please do your homework. Don't just read the cover and the table of contents, dive into the details. The Suburban Works Programme schedule is about what projects are proposed to be delivered. We lease projects under a variety of individual programmes to ensure councillors are aware of what is happening across the city. We all understand there are countless reasons for the cost of projects to fluctuate, especially in light of the recent cost of living pressures. That's precisely why we hold budget information session for every programme. These sessions give every councillor the opportunity to ask the relevant committee chairs detailed questions about projects happening citywide and across every area of council, and thus being responsible. I cannot think of a process that is more open and transparent than this one. But the key is, opposition councillors need to do their homework. I'll just close by quoting councillor Kim, who said, "The truth will prevail." And yes, it will. The truth is, this motion reveals that the opposition is either lazy, incompetent, or simply engaging in political games. For all these reasons, we will not be supporting this motion today.
Further speakers? No further speakers. Councillor Griffiths, write a reply.
Well, that was a disappointing response from councillor Huang, but well-read. And can I just say that councillor Huang, that really, it was, it took you an hour's dinner break to get those lines together? It was not amazing. I'd also like to, councillor Hutton, I was disappointed, didn't get up to speak. Certainly been mouthing off a lot over there. I'd just like to hear.
Councillor.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you.
Could we please have this?
Oh, decorum from, give me a break. Give me a break.
Councillor.
Yeah, yeah, calls everyone disgusting over here. I'll just go, oh, just the ones that deserve it, which is all of us. There we go. For the record, she just abuses the ones that deserve it.
Councillor Griffiths, you do not say she, you use the, her, she, you do not say that. You use the councillor's correct title. And let's all settle down. It's very late, but let's all settle down and show some decorum.
I'll go on.
And debate.
I'd just like to put on the record that you didn't pull councillor Howard up when she made those comments. I'd like to also put on the record that the LNP altered the rooms, the rules for how we operate in here, not us. They're your rules. You mightn't like it, but they're your rules. And you were trying to, you were trying to control the agenda. You're trying to actually, you haven't got any control of this chamber. You're trying to control the agenda and it hasn't worked. So that's your record. In terms of 2003, when I first came into this chamber, and I've been really proud of being in this chamber as an ALP member for a long time. And it was an ALP administration, and they actually put projects in the book, and they actually put figures against the projects, and we were able to debate those figures. And that's what this motion is about. So tonight, once again, we don't have the Lord Mayor here. We don't have, well, he's around, his car's still here. We don't have the Lord Mayor here, he's probably planning his next trip to Egypt, or New York, or Switzerland. I've observed councillor Murphy observing during this debate, but he hasn't participated in it. I've observed councillor Cunningham amazingly sending texts all around the chamber in order to control how her team works. And what I would say to people watching is, please watch that, because that's quite a performance. Councillor Howard, we've just heard from her sniping away, has been to Paris, and councillor Huang's been to Taiwan. So we have a well-travelled LNP group here. We have a well-travelled team of councillors here, who are more, it's, Madam Chair, I know your hearing's lacking on that side, but I just heard people interrupting.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Yes, point of order, councillor.
Well, councillor Griffiths, take a question.
No, I won't take a question. If he wants to, if he wants to participate in the debate, he's well and truly able to, and you gave it to a backbencher to do.
Thank you, no, okay, so you won't. And councillor Griffiths, nobody is interrupting you. They may be having some conversations, just like when you say that people are laughing. If I pulled you up every time you were laughing during another councillor's speech, it'd be many times. So let's get back to your reply, please.
Madam Chair, if you could, you'd get me out of this chamber as fast as possible, and you know that. What I, you would have, and there's laughter there from the chairperson. You know that you prefer to have no opposition councillors in this chamber and to run it like a dictatorship. That's what you'd love. That's what you'd love. And that's what these people on this side of the chamber would love. But that's not going to happen.
To the motion, councillor Griffiths. I know you want me to throw you out, but I'm not going to.
So I think what I've seen here today, I'm not debating you. Your role is to chair the meeting.
And I'll call you back to the motion.
Yeah, and I'd like you to not be debating me in terms of that.
That is my cherry, and I will call you back to the motion, councillor.
I'd just remind you of your role is to chair the meeting. And I just want that on the record because there's often times it doesn't happen. What I would say here is, this is a sad, silent LNP administration that has said they want to hide this information. They don't believe it should be transparent, and they don't believe they should have to debate what they're doing with the budget of Brisbane. I think that's wrong.
Councillor Griffiths, I'll say your time has expired. Thank you. We'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye. All those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division?
Seconded.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Griffiths. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please, clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being four in favour and 15 against.
The motion is lost. Councillors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at, councillors. Councillors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at item 8B on the agenda. Councillor Cassidy, would you please move the motion?
Thanks very much, Chair. I move that this council publishes on its website all reports, studies, recommendations, and details of all works completed on the Story Bridge between 2016 and 2025.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Kim that the council publishes on its website all reports, studies, recommendations, and details of all works completed on the Story Bridge between 2016 and 2025. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. After we saw the damning Story Bridge footpath reports a couple of weeks ago, it became clear that how much information this Lord Mayor had been hiding just on the footpaths from the people of Brisbane and from councillors. And he was clearly hoping that the people of Brisbane didn't find out about that. He thought he could just slip out this report and say, that's all that existed, a report done by a so-called independent group. And that was the end of the story. But what we know is that, looking through the reports that we forced the LNP to table and have published publicly, is that the Story Bridge footpaths are in a catastrophic state of disrepair. We found out from those documents, which is a very limited number of documents in the grand scheme of things, that the bridge was an at-risk structure as far back as 2016, and the Lord Mayor failed to act. So we got access to all of the footpath files, and it was only when I received the file and all of those documents in there that councillor Wines was forced to table those documents. So we made a file request, I put a file request into secret reports that council held on the bridge itself, on the whole structure of the bridge, so we can get to the bottom of it and have those publicly released as well. Not just the footpaths, but the bridge structure dating back as far as 2016. I received all of those documents in pretty reasonable time on the footpaths dating back to 2016. But access to the documents about the bridge structure have now been denied. I was told, the reason I was given is it would take far too long to cobble them all together. I said I was happy to wait. I have in some instances waited many months for files to become available and to access them. So I wondered what is the regime trying to hide in denying access to those documents? They clearly must be more damning than the documents relating to just the footpaths themselves. So we can only discern that this has to be a massive cover-up. It's, we think, from the Lord Mayor's actions that there's been immense mismanagement of the Story Bridge. And in trying to mop up from that, over the last decade of mismanagement, we're seeing an enormous cover-up going on here. So what we're doing is calling on the Lord Mayor and his LNP regime to come clean. Come clean today and tell the people of Brisbane what they have known for years about the Story Bridge and its decline. We know that during the time, the Lord Mayor was warned about the future of the Story Bridge, that he was building a $300 million Kangaroo Point pedestrian bridge just alongside it. And he knowingly let the Story Bridge rot during that time. We've heard his good friends in the state government, the premier David Chrisifouli and deputy premier Jared Blay have said that they're not interested in funding restoration works on the Story Bridge. And we saw the Lord Mayor come in here today and throw a tantrum about some comments that the Prime Minister made, I think it was on Friday last week, about the federal government's view that this LNP regime here in Brisbane City Council have let the bridge rot, and it's a council asset. Some factual statements, I thought, that the Prime Minister made in answering a question. But the Lord Mayor's response to that has been very telling. So we have this strange situation now, Chair, where the Lord Mayor is trying to claim through councillor Wines today that the single report that was produced by the committee looking at this is all of the information, even though they had access to a whole lot of information that has been released. And also, that the Lord Mayor has been claiming that there was an $80 million budget back in 2019, of which three years later councillor Wines said had needed to expand to $128 million because in 2022, they realised how extensive the damage was on the Story Bridge in stripping back the lead-based paint and doing some so-called repairs on the bridge itself. And then three years has now elapsed until we have this report, which apparently, according to the LNP, is the only report that is available. LNP, is the only report that is available, and it encompasses everything. And yet I get a response from council officers saying there's too much information and too many reports to be able to give me in my file request. So what we want is some accountability and transparency, and for the LNP to release the documents they have.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. Further speakers? Councillor Wines?
Thanks Madam Chair. I just rise and respond to this resolution. I'll just respond very briefly to some of the things that councillor Cassidy said. The remarks made by the Prime Minister on the Story Bridge were not consistent with his own actions a mere two days later when he cut the ribbon on a Tasmanian bridge where the federal government had funded eighty percent. Councillor Cassidy's assertion that documents had been denied to him is not true, and that in fact what he had done was swamp the offices with so many requests that he knew that the response would be this, and it is a deeply, deeply cynical move by him so that he could say these things in this place, and he does it for no other reason. I'd also want to go on and say that he rightly recognises that this council has spent a lot of money on restoration already and done a great deal of work already. But one thing that I think, listening to his comments, he at least has the good manners to concede he hasn't read the reports. He's merely noted some things in them, but not read them. And I can tell that from the way he speaks about things, the way he speaks about them publicly and in this place. He doesn't really understand. He just smacks for a political fight, and he's looking for one, cynically exploiting the system so that he can accuse officers of secrecy, totally cynical and unfair. Accusing us of doing no work when he himself identifies tens of millions of dollars of work in excess of a hundred million dollars. And quite frankly, as I said last time we talked about this, I have no issue sharing the record of work that this council has done. And my only condition is that councillor Cassidy bothers to read it. And so you can take, the councillors can take from my comments that we'll be supporting this resolution this evening, and I move that this motion be put.
Seconded.
Has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Dixon, let the motion be put. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy, your write of reply.
Thanks very much Chair. Another successful Labor motion. That's got to be four in four weeks, I think. And we are positive about getting to the bottom of this debacle. Because when you look at the Lord Mayor's public statements and councillor Wines' public statements over the last, even if you just take the last six years, from 2019 up to 2025, we have now four different figures. We've got two new ones from councillor Wines just now. We have an eighty million dollar figure that the Lord Mayor announced, and then there is no breakdown and no accountability as to how that was spent, including in councillor Wines' much vaunted independent report that is not broken down in there. So that was in 2019, eighty million dollars apparently committed to that project. And then in 2022, councillor Wines puts out a media release and does a press conference and says, through all of apparently the investigations in working out how much that eighty million, how much work that eighty million dollars would do, they realised it would need to be a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars. So they hadn't done any work to that point. They just realised the budget needed to be bigger. That's what we could discern from the public statements that councillor Wines made at the time. And now tonight he's saying that they spent tens of millions of dollars, and then quickly realised what he said, Chair, and then had to say a hundred million dollars. Because he knows that it may have been tens of millions of dollars. We certainly know it wasn't a hundred and twenty-eight million dollars as he claimed three years ago. And we can only discern from the Lord Mayor's panic that it is going to be in the hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars. So there's little reason that the Lord Mayor talked about a toll a few weeks ago on radio and volunteered that himself on the Story Bridge, is because he has no confidence in his ability to get the state and federal government on board. The Lord Mayor is certainly trying to soften the people up, the people of Brisbane up for a toll on the Story Bridge, or maybe a special rates levy that everybody is going to have to pay in Brisbane to fix his mess. Because he clearly has demonstrated that he's not confident in the public statements from the Premier and Deputy Premier, and the fact that, you know, confirmed that, and the fact that today all we've heard from the LNP is these attacks on the Prime Minister. You think you'd try and, you think you'd try and be nicer to the Prime Minister? You think if you're going to him cap in hand for hundreds of millions of dollars? But they can't quite help themselves because they're so political, and it's such thinly veiled, their sort of want to work together. Because deep down, they just hate the Labor Party, and they hate everything that the Labor Party stands for. So we sort of understand the motivations of the Lord Mayor and councillor Wines. Young LNP party hacks to the core, made their way into council, of course. Councillor Wines tried to exit several times to be a senator. That wouldn't have worked down the long term for him to join his colleague Julian Simmons exiting for the federal arena. It didn't work out so well for him either. So deep down, deep down, maybe that was the most successful thing he ever did, Julian Simmons. But deep down, they just hate the Labor Party, so they're trying to make this a political issue here tonight, and attack us for bringing what is clearly such an important motion, they're going to support it. And they're going to publicly release all of those volumes of data and reports and information and studies on the bridge structure itself. So we are inching closer Chair to finding the information the people of Brisbane need to confirm what they all think, that this Lord Mayor has stuffed up the Story Bridge. This Lord Mayor has single-handedly overseen the decay and destruction of the Story Bridge, the most important bridge in Australia. It is state of origin time, of course. We're not going to concede that one to New South Wales, thinking the Sydney Harbour Bridge is the most important. But you just see it when the public's talking about it, whether it's on the Lord Mayor's social media before he goes and deletes the comments, if you get into there quick enough, on any of the LNP councillors who post the standard LNP shriner graphics up and before those comments get deleted. People see right through the Lord Mayor's spin. You look at, you know, all the public comments on news stories, and you just go and talk to people. I was standing at the park in councillor Howard's ward overlooking the Story Bridge the other week, and a tradie came up to me and he said, is it true? Is it true they're putting a toll on the Story Bridge? And I said, well, that's what the Lord Mayor said, yes. And he was deeply concerned about it. He was deeply concerned about it. And I was able to confirm to him that that's what the Lord Mayor wanted to do. So then we went and spoke to more people in that park up there. People are outraged at the lack of maintenance and the destruction of the Story Bridge on the LNP.
Councillor, your time has expired. We'll now put that motion to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it.
Division, seconded.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Griffiths. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being nineteen in favour.
Motion is carried. Councillors, that now ends the meeting.